Yes, and welcome to the Department of Education. We are here today to discuss the recent progress of the Santa Barbara School District. If there is anyone who needs an interpreter, please help me to get them to the interpreter. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have headsets available for the hearing impaired. Please notify a staff member at one of the side tables if you do need one. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Well, we do have a presentation tonight. We're fortunate to have with us tonight Sandy Seal and Lars Bildston. They are from the Foundation for the Dos Pueblos High School Engineering Academy. Great write-up in the galleyed in here. Would you please come up to the ... Oh, you haven't seen it. Well, I'll hand it off to you when we're done. So Sandy's here to give us an update on the Foundation's activities. We're making progress and we have far to go, but there's a lot of enthusiasm behind it.
Yeah, I think it's been a year since I was here telling you where we are. So at the least, I owe you an annual update for how the campaign is going. So this is, it's been a wild year. It's been a really busy and active and successful year. And this is the team victorious in Sacramento this year. As you know, we are organized into a 501(c)(3). We got our 501 certification in December of 2007. And we have a very active Board of Directors. Lars Bildston from our Board is also here tonight. And Amir Abosheir, whom you know is the Director of the Academy, serves as an ex officio Board Member. We do two things. We are in the middle, as you know, of a capital campaign to raise $3 million for a new building, but we also raise all of the money for the operating expenses of the Academy. We have done that for the last two years, for the two years that we've been incorporated. The operating expenses run about $100,000 a year. Roughly half of that is travel, which families pay for, for their own students. And if people can't pay, we raise the money for that. This year, we got extra support from UCSB, and Raytheon gave us $9,500 to cover our travel costs to Atlanta. So I want to give them a special thank you. In the last two years, these are the corporate sponsors that we have gained here in the community. Allergan is the most recent. We know we are getting one or two new ones coming up this fall. There's plenty of potential out there. There's a lot of technical companies in this community, and most of them are very happy to be involved in this program. So the capital campaign, as you know, it's been very successful. A measure of success is the interest of people to get into the program. As you know, he's restricted to one class per year. That's 32 students. This year, there were 90 applicants from eighth graders to get into the freshman class. It's extremely difficult to make those choices. Amir and the administration work very hard on that. So it's successful. It needs to grow. And in order to grow, it needs space. And the space is the new facility on campus. And Amir wrote a grant to the state and was awarded $3 million in matching funds for a total of $6 million to build a new facility at DP. With the hard work of Dave here, we recently received a letter from the OPS, is that it? Yeah. Saying that our allocation has been approved. And we have 18 months, as of June 4th of this year, to request the matching funds. And that is November of 2010. So we now have a definite date. So what is that timeline? Again, with Dave's hard help and KBZ, the architects, they began working on the architectural design last winter. The plans were submitted and approved by the DSA in February of this year. We received our allocation letter in May. And the goal is November of 2010 to have the matching $3 million in hand. So what's happened this year? This is just a summary of our major gifts. In January, you might have seen the news, we got $150,000 from the Women's Fund of Santa Barbara. In March, Venico Community Partnership gave us $10,000. And in May, we were given $40,000 from the Santa Barbara Foundation. So where are we? To date, this is a summary, $306,000 from foundations, 135 from individual philanthropists, 215 from the community at large. That includes our parents. Last fall, in September, we got our four classes together, and we charged the parents to go out and raise money. And they did. They did an amazing job. That group by itself raised about $157,000 in a very short time period. And 100% of the families have contributed to the capital campaign. So our total to date is $656,000. And I just want to end here with the plans as they were approved. This is it. This is 12,000 square feet. And it has these wonderful classrooms and facilities for building things, welding, mechanical engineering, a place to build prototypes, a conference room, a computer classroom. The $6 million budget includes $600,000 for equipping this building, for all the instrumentation and the computers that are going to be required. So it's all in the budget. So I'm here and Lars is here. We're available to answer questions if there's anything you want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? It's a hard environment to be raising money in.
It is.
And you are having to work, really work. It's a tremendous goal. I'm very, very hopeful that you can do it. This is very, very worthwhile.
Well, you know, I really believe it's going to happen.
Good.
I honestly do.
Good.
We're off to a good start. And yes, it's a tough environment right now, but this is it. You know, everything you hear, it's about education. You know, this is where it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And keep it up, and we'll look forward to the next update on it.
All right. And Superintendent's report?
If you are ready for that.
Good. The state budget stalemate continues. I know, that's hardly news. Lawmakers have been debating whether to suspend Proposition 98, which is the guarantee of minimum level of funding for schools each year, passed by the voters in 1988. Various proposals have been made to preserve as much as of the K-12 funding as possible. None have been successful, and the state legislature and governor are now a month overdue. They were supposed to pass the new state budget one month ago. We held up our end of the bargain. We did pass our budget by the end of June. Earlier this year, lawmakers cut education spending by 8.6 billion over two years. Most districts have laid off teachers and increased class sizes. We have also made significant cuts totaling $8.5 million over the last 15 months. But we believe that our current district budget will allow us to make our 3% reserve. Yet, we may again be faced with mid-year cuts on the part of the state. So we need to be cautious. So where do our elementary and secondary districts stand today regarding teacher layoffs? In May, 69 teachers received reduction in force notices for this year. Some were part-time positions. That doesn't mean 69 full-time positions. And some layoffs would have been necessary just due to declining enrollment. The good news is that we have been able to rescind many of the notices because we did not move forward on all of the potential budget cuts. And because of a retirement incentive, resignations, or teachers moving out of the area, we've been able to rescind 42 of the RIF reduction in force notices. 29 in the elementary district and 13 in the secondary district. Two of those secondary teachers were riffed the previous year, 2007-08, and have been in temporary assignments this last year. As you know, the deadline for the new retirement incentive is August 14. We anticipate additional resignations, thus making way to rescind additional RIF notices. And at our next meeting in August, we will give you a report on our progress to date on the retirement incentive. In fact, we'll give you a final report on the meeting later in August because we'll have the final numbers then. Our two-year round schools, Cleveland and the Community Academy, will be starting Thursday, July 16. That's two days from now. The second and final session of summer school in the secondary district ends on Friday, July 24. And our elementary summer schools were reduced due to state funding cuts. Last week, we received the official notice that due to budget cuts on the part of the city, the city's school crossing guard program administered through the police department will end on August 14. We've been talking about it with our elementary principals. There are nine elementary schools that have been part of the program. One of those, well, two of those are charter schools as well. They've been notified, and they're sharing the information that are at the respective school communities. The police department has offered to work with individual schools to help establish a training program for volunteers. But we will discuss the item at our August 11 board meeting, and that's our next board meeting. I'd like to draw your attention to the new mission statement and core values. Core values are on the sidewall. The mission statement is right behind me. Thanks to the generous anonymous donation of hand-painted tiles, our mission statement is now handsomely displayed in both the boardroom and in the foyer in the building lobby. Finally, the board brief. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the board brief. It's a collection of reports and news items on the school and district matters. A copy of the July 2, it's July 2nd, excuse me, board brief is on display in the reception area, or can be provided through the superintendent's office. I'd like to highlight just two of those items. The first was a report on Title III, Year Four Corrective Action Timeline. Since the elementary district has made two of the annual measurable achievement objectives, but not the third, for students who are English learners. The second is a letter from the California Department of Education on Special Education Compliance, which concluded that because of overall compliance determination by the elementary school district, that it meets the requirement, the district is not required to seek technical assistance from focused monitoring and technical assistance on the part of the state. And that concludes the superintendent's report tonight.
Thank you. We are on to Item C2, Announcement of Closed Session Action. There is no action to report out of closed session. Item C3?
Excuse me, I had a request for a public comment on that item.
Item C3, Public Comments.
I had a request for a public comment on that agenda item.
Um, actually-
I have a right to make a comment on the fact that there is no action. Under the Brown Act, I have a right to make a comment, and under your policies, you can't prohibit me from commenting on this agenda item-
Right.
-and allow people to speak on all the other agenda items.
Right. You're allowed to speak during public comment, which very specifically says-
Right. Tell me what it says. It says that's for items that are not on the agenda. You can't have it both ways, Ms. Parker.
No. That's not what it says.
Yes, it does.
It says, "There is a separate opportunity at the opening of the meeting for public comments on the consent agenda, other listed agenda topics, and on other matters not on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board." That's Item C2.
Not on the agenda. This is on the agenda.
Other listed agenda topics and consent agenda. You can speak on C2 under C3. And Mr. Price, did you want to comment?
I'm sorry, but you have told people that are speaking under public comment that they can not speak to items that are on the agenda because public comment is for only items that are not on the agenda. It's on tape that you have done that numerous times.
Yes. And I have said that for the action and the conference agenda items, if people try to speak on those. C2 is neither on the action nor the conference agenda. So you speak on it under C3. Mr. Price, did you want to chime in?
No, I agree with the board president. The time for public comment, if any, on this item is under general public comments. Public comments are not taken on board announcements out of closed session. Period.
Well, we'll see.
All right. Item C3, Public Comments.
That was Carolyn Menard, followed by Eric Hancy, followed by Jonas Esposito.
I just want to check on the number that we have. Do we need to limit?
There's eight.
Are you trying to find a way to limit the time I have, Ms. Parker?
We have 20 minutes assigned for this, but with seven, you can have three minutes.
Oh, thank you. First of all, I would like to request, as you know, the public has a right to request that items be placed on the agenda. I'd like to request that the following item be placed on the agenda of the next meeting. Unethical and illegal acts of the Santa Barbara School District Administration that the FICMAT has refused to address. Also, I'd like to say that I don't understand how this board can have a whole agenda that does not once address the serious problems in the FICMAT report, most of which have not been dealt with whatsoever and still exist. There will not be a meeting again until August 11th, and still, nothing about the problems. I'd like to specifically speak to an issue mentioned in the FICMAT report. Many weren't mentioned in the FICMAT report regarding El Puente. It mentions that a number of professional and parental sources inform the FICMAT team that district's site administrators often meet with the parents of students with disabilities who are being considered for expulsion and encourage them to voluntarily enroll. And it's assumed that they would drop the expulsion because of what they go on to say later in El Puente. And because they, there is apparently an agreement that El Puente will only accept a certain number of special ed kids that actually need services, which is really all of them, but, you know, they apparently seem to think there are some special ed kids that don't need extensive services. And then, so they get, they have the parents agree to drop all the special ed services, at least the resource class and a resource specialist services, so that they can get into El Puente. And so the expulsion then will be dropped. And as the FICMAT report says. And then, when the voluntary period expires, the site administrator, the principal, opposes efforts to return the student to his or her school. Does the final insult. This raises many compliance questions and appears to circumvent the requirement to determine whether or not an offending behavior is a manifestation of the student's disability. That's only one of the laws that this violates. In addition, I wanted to read a letter that Jonas Esposito had sent to Bill Galaspy, the FICMAT investigator. She had spoken with this, with him about this at the meeting. It says that she's concerned about the schools, the junior highs, are pressuring parents of special ed students to sign a voluntary enrollment to El Puente when their grades are low and they don't have enough credits to graduate into their local high school. She followed this up with an email, and still, the FICMAT report didn't address this. We have serious problems with the way this district is sending students with special needs to El Puente in violation of federal law, in violation of the Federal Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act.
Thank you, Mrs. Menard.
There's nothing on the agenda here. You don't meet until August 11th. What's going on?
Eric Hancy, followed by Jonas Esposito, followed by Anna Rose.
I want to give the board a copy of Jonas Esposito's email to FICMAT.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Eric Hancy, and I'm a member of the Special Education Advisory Council. Briefly, there are several items that I would like to address. First, it was extremely disappointing to see that this meeting's agenda did not include any items pertaining to the FICMAT report. The report was presented to the board on June 23rd, and now, assuming that it is added to the next board agenda, there'll be no discussion of the report until August 11th. So seven weeks with no discussion on the report. And the next board meeting is only two weeks from the start of the new school year. So an opportunity to review and implement recommendations is lost. Frustration and anxiety are only going to increase for parents as the new school year approaches, and the same circumstances exist that were present when families stood up in front of you last year. Second, the executive summary section of the FICMAT report stated that the Special Education Department is aligned with the district's mission and core beliefs, but does not have a written mission, vision, or philosophy for special education programs. Our group drafted a vision statement, and we offer it to the board to be used as a starting point until such time as the personnel, per the FICMAT report, are in place and a formal statement can be created. The proposed vision statement is as follows. It is the vision of the Santa Barbara School District's Special Education Department that an educational climate will exist where the individual needs of all children are met by assisting each child in reaching their full potential as members of the larger learning community through appropriate, state-of-the-art educational practices which embrace a transparent and collaborative process. Lastly, I can appreciate the difficulties associated with essentially what has turned out to be a complete overhaul of the Special Education Department. That being said, in the end, results are the only thing that count. So please work with us. Thank you, Mr. Hancy.
Jonas Esposito, followed by Anna Rose, followed by David Lack.
Yes, good evening. Jonas Esposito from the Dyslexia Awareness and Resource Center. I came in front of this board on, I believe it was June 23rd. And it was on a case on one of your principals who's been delaying assessments on not only one student, but many students. And I also said, I also, I was misinformed. I thought that this board understood that there were several dozen parents who complained to, I believe, Robin Sikowsky took, did the investigation. I thought this board knew about these complaints from the parents. But on Monday, June 29th, my husband and I met with Brian Savish, the superintendent. And I asked him, what did the board say about all the parents' complaints against the same principal that I am complaining about? And he looked at me, and I said, well, did the board ever get a report on those complaints? And he was honest. He said, no. So this board does not even know what's going on in the district. This is a principal who is not only interfering with this, my client, and also refusing assessments. This is a principal who I spoke to superintendent about two years ago, where she took the side of a one parent because she didn't like the parent against, and spoke to the court or wrote, had a written document written to the board, and she took a side in a divorce case. Now, principals are not supposed to take sides in divorce cases and child custody cases. I had given Mr. Superintendent Savish information over the last three years on this principal, and nothing is happening to her. This principal is causing damage to a lot of children's lives. She delays assessments, delays assessments, and I have given the proof to Superintendent Savish. This was almost two weeks ago. I have not heard anything back. And it's very similar to what happened when I spoke in front of this Board of Education on September 30th. One case concerned the student who was assaulted at El Puente, and the second case was about a student who had cancer. And my complaint was against the assistant principal at the school. This boy had cancer for three years, and he came in with a little bit of marrow corner, and she decided to expel him. I came in front of this board and told you the pain. This boy was in, and we didn't have a prognosis that his cancer was going to be cleared up. When I asked Superintendent Savish, again, at my meeting with him on June 29th, what had happened, he said, oh, well, I spoke to her. This just speaking to people doesn't do it. We need investigations.
30 seconds.
What is a trustee, a trust, you are here with the trust to take care of your children. And unless you remove these people from their positions and put them somewhere else, nothing is going to happen. Now, Mr. Savish, I have nothing personal against him. He's very charming, he's very nice, but he never follows through. And we cannot put the trust of our children's lives in his hand, in his hands, if he is not going to let this board know about the retaliation and about the problems we're having with principals in this district. We're talking about children's lives. A child with cancer, a child who gets put out to El Puente and gets beaten on the head. And by the way, the case that I came with you two weeks ago-
Thank you.
-I now found an attorney to take that case. So it's more money from the district.
Thank you.
Mr. Savish is not getting back to us, and this is not right. We're talking about, look at it-
Ms. Esposito-
We are talking about children's lives.
You are now out of order.
Thank you. I'm glad you want to hear from us.
Anna Rose, followed by Leslie Sanderson, followed by David Lack.
I'm Anna Rose. Is it possible to address with David Lack?
Yes.
Thank you.
And this is regarding D-24, which is the Washington School.
Yes, you can go ahead.
Hi, I'm, I'm, thank you for having me. I'm David Lack, and I'm the, I run a company called Lack Construction, and we won a project with you, D-24, to relocate some classrooms up there. I'll try to be brief, and I'll take some questions if you have some. But a lot of things happened with the deal back and forth, and recently, there's been a little activity related to a situation with my bank, which sent a letter off to you. And then they rescinded that letter, pulled it back, withdrawn it, saying that I wasn't comparable of building the building or something like that. And also related to the bonding, I have, I'm reading your staff report, which I just got, and I have a letter here that my bond will be in place to go ahead and put your school, you know, go ahead and relocate those classrooms up at Washington. Just the concern is, I know we've all worked very hard at this, and we put some municipal financing together. In fact, the same bank that is kind of criticizing my company, which is withdrawing that, is backpedaling now, has helped with that municipal financing, I believe. So in a sense, I just ask you to take Item D-24 and let us progress and finish the school because there's a lot of people that need the work in town. And a lot of people are geared up for it, ready to have it. We'll be on schedule. And if you went out to rebid it, you'd probably spend another $25,000, $50,000 rebidding it. And I can just tell you right now, I probably have $50,000 to $100,000 in this deal already. And in these tough economic times, when I'm trying to keep people hired in this town, it's going to be a little bit difficult on our company should you proceed with Action 24, 24, which is rescinding the contract to my company. So I thank you for your time and listening to me, and I'm open for questions.
Thank you. We do not take questions-
Oh, I'm sorry.
-or ask questions during public comment, but thank you.
Oh, sure.
I have one comment. Does Mr. Junk have that-
Oh, yeah.
-bond thing you're talking about? Anna Rose, followed by Leslie Sanderson.
Yes, I have the letter from the insurance company.
Thank you.
Again, I'm Anna Rose. I'm with Lack Construction. I'm just here to confirm that we are in place and ready to get up and running on this project, understanding that the bonding issue has become somewhat of an issue, but we've got that all resolved and just waiting for, in a sense, consent with the district to move forward on the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Sanderson, followed by John Houchen.
Leslie Sanderson, also a parent of a child of special needs. And it's come to my attention that there will be a sizable amount of federal stimulus funds coming to Santa Barbara School District specifically for special education. I understand some of these funds might be used to offset the budget defaults that were created by the state financial crisis. The remaining money, however, could be used for helping create jobs and improving needs of, improving, I'm sorry, special education services. I would encourage the board to determine the amount of money that we have received, the amount we are going to receive, and the plan for how the money is going to be used. A transparent process regarding the use of these funds will be an initial step in helping the relations with families and with children with special needs. The FICMAT report recommended an ombudsman position to create a collaborative environment between parents and the school district. I would suggest that the board consider funding this position with some of these one-time funds. An improved relationship with parents would end up saving the district money as far as averted lawsuits. And the duties of the current parent liaison could also be encompassed within this position, avoiding duplication of services and saving additional dollars. avoiding duplication of services and saving additional dollars. Money saved by reducing or eliminating attorney fees alone would easily pay for the position in the next year. An ombudsman could be hired to solve complaints in a mutually satisfactory manner, and the savings could be tracked and compared with prior year's spendings on attorney fees, all the while improving the image of the district. The annual budget is a fluid document, we've been told this before, and despite the position not being identified in the original budget, the necessity and the potential savings far outweigh the costs, in my opinion. A rationale for this job, taken from similar positions in other districts, is listed below. Basically, the ombudsman is a neutral party who works to ensure that the bureaucracies function fairly and provide service equitably. They work independently, not on behalf of any one party. Their personally identifiable information shared is not revealed to third parties without permission, and compliance with special education laws is a priority. The ombudsman investigates concerns and promotes compliance by monitoring systemic issues and reporting to the Board of Education. I think that's a key part that we're missing kind of here in this district.
About 25 seconds.
And the rest of the document here talks about responsibilities of ombudsmen's and other school districts that have been successful in creating that program there. So, in conclusion, I ask the board to please seek out the specific information regarding the uses and plans for the stimulus monies. And then hiring an ombudsman is just one suggestion that the parents felt would be helpful for the district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John Houchen.
I'm John Houchen. I'm here as a teacher, and I first want to apologize for not having made these comments at the 5:15 before the closed session. What I'd like to address briefly is the retirement incentive that was offered by the district. I understand that these monies came to the district very late in June, perhaps mid-June, was discussed initially in late June at a board meeting. And I do know that there are nine teachers who had submitted resignations or retirement letters prior to this. I feel that these teachers all stepped forward and did the right thing for the district in terms of being ethical and letting you have ample time to find replacements and to get organized for the school, upcoming school year. I don't know if you've made any decisions regarding whether or not it's possible to set the date back and include some of these people or all of these people. It may be something that is beyond the law to do. But I do want to say that I think that all of them acted ethically and responsibly to submit their letters, and I have a slight fear that in the future, teachers may really hold on until the last moment, not knowing. I know some of the folks had come down to personnel, had called personnel, are you sure there's not going to be an incentive offered? I know there was one, what, $130 or something? But no one retires because of that. But in any case, I've heard from a lot of these teachers and I, I hope that if you are still giving consideration to this, that you will strongly consider the possibility, if it's within your power, to extend this offer to these nine teachers. Thank you.
And we will now move on to the consent agenda. Any items that board members would like to poll? Dr. Noel.
Yes, D-6, D-11, D-12.
D-6, D-11.
6, 11, 12, 15, 23, and 25.
Any others, board members? Mrs. Deacon.
24.
Any others?
And I assume board see, board members see the attachments that were additions to D-2, D-12, and D-24?
Yes. The full list, the full list is D-6, D-11, D-12, D-15, D-23, D-24, D-25.
I did not understand Dr. Savish's comment.
You have some attachments there in the dais for D-2, D-12, and D-24.
D-17.
D-17. Any others, board members? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The remaining consent agenda items pass unanimously. We now move on to item E1. This is the public hearing on district name change and approval of resolution number 2009/10-01 to change the name of the Santa Barbara High School District to the Santa Barbara Secondary School District. And for members of the public, we are essentially going through, over the past, over the past several meetings, we've been going through a, I think ritual might almost be the word for it, but sort of the step-by-step requirements required by the state in order to officially change the name of the district. So, with that, I am going to open the public hearing on the resolution to change the name of the Santa Barbara High School District. Is there any public comment on this?
No.
There is no public comment on item E1. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and ask board members to take action on resolution number 09/10-01.
I would move to approve resolution 09/10-01.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion to change the name of the Santa Barbara High School District to the Santa Barbara Secondary School District. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously. And we now move to item E2, presentation on and approval of Harding Elementary School's application for an early childhood initiative expansion.
Well, thanks to the relationships and partnerships built by Harding School, we have a tremendous opportunity. Robin Sikowsky, would you like to introduce this?
I sure will. It's very exciting, yet another addition to the program at Harding School. You have, you should have, or you're going to get a copy of the strategic plan from Harding School, as well as an executive summary of the proposal to the Bauer Foundation. And Dr. Kingston, Dr. Sally Kingston, principal, is going, is here to give a brief presentation and to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, and thank you for hearing from our school one more time. I have given you three things intentionally. One, the strategic plan, so that you can see how all of the pieces of the things we've presented and what I'm going to discuss tonight are related. Secondly, I gave you a copy of the book Whatever It Takes because the early childhood program that I'm working on with the Bauer Foundation is based on the Harlem Children's Zone Project. And this also chronicles their story of reform, and it nicely talks about the research on poverty and how that's evolved over time. And this isn't an add-on to Harding School, this is something fundamentally different. And so, I thought it would really help to explain what it would look like. And then, thirdly, I put together an executive summary that describes some of the highlights of the proposal that I'm going to formally submit, I hope, on Friday to the J.S. Bauer Foundation. Since February, I've been talking to John Clark, who's their executive director, about expanding the work we are already doing at Harding School. In the strategic plan, there's an early childhood goal area, we have an early childhood committee, and we've really been focusing on making the program strong at the school between preschool and kindergarten, and really focusing on individual children and expanding some parent education and leadership opportunities. The program that they put in place and is evolving in Harlem is really a different model. It's much more expansive, it's zero to five, and it's an entire neighborhood. And that's what I expect will evolve over the course of at least 10 years at Harding, which is the length of time we're talking about working with Bauer Foundation. So, I'm just going to read you a section of the book, so it gives you a picture of how different it is than a traditional notion of an early childhood program. And I won't be lengthy because I know you have a long agenda. When you've got most of the kids in the neighborhood involved in high-quality programs, you begin to change the cultural context of that neighborhood. If you are surrounded by people who are always talking about going to college, you're going to end up thinking, hey, maybe this is something I could do too. You can't help but, can't help but get contaminated by that idea. It seeps into your pores, and you don't even know that you've caught the virus. And really, the focus in Harlem is to start with the parents early. We know the research on parental aspirations for their children and how that matters more than material resources. And really focusing on connecting existing agencies, like they are doing at Maine School and Carpinteria, creating a coordinated network of services all the way up through preschool and kindergarten. So, that's, that's the vision. I'm not going to go through all of the details of this. How we'll get there, I've outlined on the back of the page, there are really four key areas. One is high-quality learning for all, family support and stability, social-emotional competence, and health and well-being. And next year, what I'm proposing is a planning year that will include, include a director who will work under my direction, a family advocate that will be full-time, and increasing the preschool hours so that we will have, we have three state preschools at this time that are half-time. So, we'll have three full-time, full-day state preschools in addition to the regio-fee-based preschool that I know you know that we started over a year ago. Some of those activities, so really focusing on high-quality learning for all preschool children, family support and stability, opening a family resource center, and starting to bring in neighbors, so providing resources for them and existing families. Additionally, the development of a webpage that will be dedicated to everything you need to know from zero to five, connecting with existing agencies. Social-emotional competence, this is an area, all of these things will be really developed when we put together the plan collaboratively next year, but these are some key things we're going to start with that we know will make a difference. We have, I think, a really great screening process for students who need additional support through our implementation of the Elk Grove Model, which you have heard about as well. And so, I'd like to extend that to preschool as well, and really start looking at the needs that the students are coming in with and how can we can be, we can begin to support them. And then, in the area of health and well-being, some very simple things, emergency cards for those kids at the school, student cumulative folders at the school, results of their health and well-being assessments from health linkages at the school, students, preschool students' health records in Health Master at the school, and additional hours for our office staff and our health assistant to deliver direct services to those students. Other Phase 1 activities include a comprehensive evaluation that I've been working on with Dr. Mike Furlong, not furlough, I guess I was saying furlough for a few weeks. Oh, he thought that was funny too. Okay. So, and next year, we'll really be collecting baseline data for the incoming preschool students and kindergarten students, developing some standardized procedures for intake of children and families, and also some of those documentation areas I discussed in terms of CUM folders and access to information that will follow students. And finally, really, next year is about bringing together partners and coming up with a three-year strategic plan that then we would then present to the Bauer Foundation and to the board. Between now and September, I would expect I will come back to you with a memo of understanding related to the evaluation that UCSB would like to conduct. And that would be the, the next formal thing, I think, you will hear from me regarding this project. It's an incredible gift, I feel blessed. I'll leave it at that.
So, as you can see from the agenda item, the presentation that Sally just gave, and then the action item is for your approval for her to submit the proposal to the Bauer Foundation.
Board members? Dr. Noel.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the permission, to grant permission, is that what the phrase was?
It's to approve.
Dr. Kingston and Harding to submit the proposal to Bauer Foundation.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. There's a motion, but is there discussion on this or any questions? I just have a couple. One is fee-based regio-inspired preschool program. Would that be on some sort of a sliding scale?
We have that in existence now, and we do not have it on a sliding scale because to make it work at this time, we have relied on the generous donation from the Byalas Family Foundation, who has funded in support that program. If we were to get to a place where we were lucrative, if you will, because we're really break-even enough to do that, we could, but we are not at that place. However, I have been in discussion with Head Start about holding some spaces in that program for students who cannot meet the income requirements, and we also have students who receive state funding through a program at the county education office, the name I'm not clear on, and they are fully funded by the state, although I know there's a long waiting list. I would like to see blended programs in all four classrooms, and I know that's a level of management, administration, and paperwork that I'm not prepared to handle at this time.
Which is why you would have a director.
Exactly.
And then, my other quick question is, the development of a P2 professional learning community. When I hear P2, I, I have certain connotations, and I don't think that that's what it's referring to here.
Preschool, preschool through second grade. And that was out of the Early Intervention for School Success Grant that we awarded.
Okay, thank you. All right, board members, we have a motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Kingston. And I also want to thank you, because I know that this is a personal gift to us, and, and I really appreciate that, and I know board members will read it and think about that, so, thank you.
It's an excellent book. Thank you very much.
We are now on to item E3, approval of bridge program parent letter and program information sheet.
Robin Sikowsky, our associate superintendent, will make this presentation.
Okay, this is a follow-up portion of a previous board agenda item where the bridge program at San Marcos High School and Santa Barbara High were approved, and with the stipulation that a board-approved parent information packet, which includes a letter to parents, would be developed. And then, at the last board meeting, a couple of board members wanted to help with revision of a letter so that there was not as much jargon, it was a little bit shorter, and other ways to improve it so that it would be more understandable by parents. Dr. Noel and Mrs. Cordero, and at Cordero, we're, we're both going to do that work. As we started getting the scheduling together, we had a quick timeline to get things together. Dr. Noel was not able to come to the meeting that morning, and Susan and Mrs. Deacon helped with that. So, the letter that you see is what was crafted. We started out with the two principals in the room, and then, really, Mrs. Cordero and Mrs. Deacon wrote the letter themselves, I had to go to another meeting. So, they have done some of the work. There is one change that I made this last week, and we've been talking about the CIF sports participation by students. I took it out of this letter, and because I was not 100% sure about that, I talked to one of the associate commissioners today from CIF. There are, there's one commissioner and four associates or assistants. And in looking at the ed code on continuation high schools, which says clearly, students from continuation schools will not participate in CIF sports, and then mashing it up with another piece of the bylaws that talks about multi-scholes within a school and multi-programs, there's a little bit of conflict there in that there are so many new programs that the CIF commissioners are being called upon to act and to make decisions. They are calling a special meeting, not just because of our score, school and our situation, but because of multiple schools in the area that are trying to do similar things. And the point is, we all want those students, if they're eligible with academics and all the other pieces that go into CIF, to be able to participate in sports. So, I'm fairly certain we're going to get that kind of decision, but it's not done yet. I don't have the stamp from the commissioner. Mark Caprito did talk with another assistant, the other assistant gave him The other assistant gave him the go-ahead that yes, that was going to happen. But since I didn't hear it personally, I want to wait till they make a decision and I get it in writing for you. So with this letter that we, you know, we're hoping we can go forward to start the program and get the parents and students in for personal interviews, we have left out the sports piece. If we, in fact, get that information, I'll get that to you. We'll adjust the letter appropriately and go forward.
Can I just clarify one thing? But PE would still be definitely a part of their regular schedule.
Absolutely. The students are concurrently enrolled, and that's another piece of the difficult part. They will have their PE, they will have their science or social studies, or, you know, history, electives, other parts of their full academic, and they are full-day students, will be in the regular high school, San Marcos and Santa Barbara High. It's just their two core, two extended core periods of English Language Arts, English, and math, and those are, they're not double-blocked. They're like a little bit longer, like a period and a half over like three periods. So that's the part that's the bridge program.
Okay. Comments or questions? Two public comments.
I just want to make them very clear that I did not participate in the draft.
Mr. Heron?
Simple question. How many of these letters will go out?
I do not have the answer to that. I know that there are students who are identified by their low test scores and contacts with the junior highs. As happened last year in that program that started fairly late, there were kids who didn't get in. So they will be having interviews. They will send out more letters. So I'm, I don't know, Mr. Heron. I know that they have thirty spots at each school, twenty-five to thirty spots.
Reason I ask is, it seems like we could be personal. We could say, Dear Parents, we could write their name between your high school, we could say the high school. We know whose principal's going to sign it. We know what high school. It's purely a wood-processing thing. Can't we be a little bit more personal?
Mrs. Deacon?
Mr. Heron, I think it was always our intention that these would be personalized. This is just a generic template.
I go by what I see.
Yes, that's true. We didn't put blank or the name.
Dear blank. Any other comments on this before we take public comment? All right, let's go ahead.
Carolyn Renard, followed by Joan Esposito.
You know, I find this, this letter to be very disturbing. And just another, an example, one example of another sophisticated attempt by this school district administration under the direction of Mr. Service to avoid providing services to special education service students and students who qualify under Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. The letter says, the Dear Parent Letter says, "The bridge program is for ninth-grade students who we feel can be academically successful but have not yet achieved their potential." That's exactly the kind of student that should be assessed for eligibility for Section 504 or special education services. There's not one mention of this. I don't think that this board should approve this letter. The parents, if this is really a parent information letter, this, you should be telling the parents that if your child is close to graduating and hasn't been able to achieve their potential, that they should request that a special education assessment be done because it could be due to unidentified disabilities. I can't believe there's not one mention of that in here, and I bet all of the students in that program qualify under one of those programs, and I bet most of them are not getting it. And that's what the whole problem is in this district. And here we go again. You know, I hope the board doesn't let this happen. And Ms. Parker, I hope that you'll put as much energy into making sure that students don't have their civil rights denied as you do making sure the meeting is proceeding orderly.
Joan Esposito?
Joan Esposito, here we go again. This program I'm suggesting to you, and if you don't do it, I will file a complaint with the Office of Civil Rights, is that this program looks like it is going to be filled with students with special needs, whether it's emotional or learning disabilities. There's no reason for a child to be low-functioning, as you're describing in this, unless there is a learning disability and they're having problems learning how to read and write. I'm suggesting that you identify and use the federal and state laws, and I don't have the section right now, but it's on identifying and serve these students. Each one of these students should be screened and then assessed under 504 and IDEA. And if you don't do it, I personally believe, I could be wrong, or I personally believe, you are opening yourselves up for a major lawsuit. You are denying these children their rights under federal statutes and state statutes. And you all need to really look at this issue. This is like the truancy program. This is like the gang intervention program. There's nothing in here on special education. There's no directives to parents to say, maybe if your child has a learning disability or ADD, could you look at these characteristics? I mean, please, go out and search for these children. Don't just jump, dump them in another program. You dump them in El Puente, you dump them here. I mean, you are all human beings. I may sound angry, but you know, I'm the person that goes to these kids' funerals when they get older. I'm the person that goes into the prison with them. I'm the person that goes into juvenile court with them. Please, one of you, all of you, go and look at the juvenile court with the standing room only. And I'd say 99% of these kids have dyslexia, learning disabilities, or emotional disturbances, like the director, the man from FICMAT said. They come in this district with a learning disability, and they go out with, was it? A personality disorder. No, they don't go out with a personality disorder. Go out, they go out illiterate, they go out uneducated, they go out, they're frustrated, they're tending to drugs, they're tending to crime. Please, your job is to search and serve these kids. You are supposed to go into the district. You are supposed to, Brian, go into juvenile court and find these kids. And now you have them in this program. And you are supposed to inform these parents of their rights. Please, as human beings, I'm asking you, why are you on a board? Why are you called the trustees? I mean, if I'm out of, you know, if I'm off-base, I, believe me, I work with these kids every day. I was in juvenile court today. I am with them every day. Please come into my office, look at my thirty-six feet of files in my, if you really want to know what's going on in your district, please come into my office. I have hundreds and hundreds of cases from this district. Thank you.
Comments?
Our attorney heard that, and so I presume at some point you'll respond to us about it or at least inform us as to what you think about it.
Mrs. Cordero?
I was just going to say that we are, that when we drafted this letter, our goal was to revise the letter that we had. We were specifically not revising, debating the program because that is a decision the board has already voted on. But we also had expectation that other board members would have input into the letter. So if people want to add things, want to take things out, want to change the language, et cetera, it was expected that this would be something of a working document.
Mm-hmm. And I do want to comment myself that as part of, as part of creating the bridge program, we made search and serve a specific point in that for those members of the public that were there. So, Dr. Noel?
Yes, my opposition to the creation of the program is a matter of record. My opposition to this statement, I'd like to state now because with all due respect to my colleagues, my understanding of what this program is about and this letter are about five miles apart. And I don't think, well, my wife has taught me, she's a litigator. She says, "Don't use the word fraud because it has a very special meaning." So I won't use the word fraud, but I'm very tempted. This is, this letter is misleading, it's deceptive, and it withhold, withholds vital information for parents. And I'm just deeply, deeply disappointed in it. I did submit to Mrs. Cordero a seven-point list of things that it doesn't say and should say, but they did not find their way into the draft. Thank you, Madam President.
Dr. Noel, you did. Mrs. Cordero, would you like the floor?
I'm sorry, yes. I just wanted to point out that you didn't indicate to me that you were not going to be at the meeting. When you emailed me, you indicated that you were.
And I understand that. But you know that I wasn't told about the meeting.
Well, I didn't, I didn't have your information with me because I did not expect to have, to be included.
Thank you for those comments. There was a mix-up. I was called and told, come to a meeting at eight o'clock the next morning. I could not do that. I was told it was a committee consisting of principals, whereas I thought you and I were going to get together and come up with wording that. But this was, this was under the control of staff. I was never told, I last said I could only, I could make it on a certain date. I was never told anything from that time. I didn't know that you guys had met and done something. And I know you did your job, and I take it, I take you on face value when you say you worked with what you were given. I appreciate that. But, but I think the district is being, is being all but deceitful in the way it's managing the information about this program.
Mrs. Cordero?
I just wondered, since you have criticisms of the letter, did you bring your points to share with us so that we can revise the letter?
Put them on the screen if you want.
Well, I think it's whether you want.
Yes, I'd love to have these put on the screen. What? I know, I'm old-fashioned, and, and the last time I tried to use your system, I was uncomfortable. And I used large face type. I think, I think that the district is obliged to tell them their legal rights, particularly in light of the fact that Santa Barbara High School is a program improvement school, which entitles students who would be going to that school, starting in the fall, to free transportation to any school that they want, to another high school that is not a program improvement high school. That's a choice parents get to make. The district must honor. And that they would be entitled to free tutoring under the supplemental services program under Title I, it being a Year Two program improvement school. To me, that's information parents should have to make an intelligent decision. They, the letter does not, at any point, call the school a continuation school. That is what it is by law, under CDS code number, under the California Department of Education's definitions. And I, I have not seen anybody refute that. It is a continuation school. In fact, I thought that was no longer a point in debate. Student, parents should know that. That means changing schools. It's a transfer. It's a transfer to a continuation school. And if they graduate from that school, they're going to have a degree from a continuation program, continuation school, not from Santa Barbara High School. And calling it a bridge program and trying to hide this fact, in my opinion, it seems to be trying to hide this fact from the parents when they make their decision. Continuation school programs are embedded in, pardon me, are not accredited. Our programs in this town are not accredited by WASC. This bridge program, it being part of a continuation school, is not part of an accredited high school program. Academic standards at continuation schools are lower than they are at regular high schools. And look at the, look at the ASAM, or what do you call it? Alternative Schools Assessment Model, if you don't, if you question that. That's, core courses in the bridge program are intended for the very low-achieving students. I mean, that is, that's the purpose of this program, which means, in my opinion, student, parents should be told that your kid will be with pretty much exclusively low-achieving kids. That might make a difference to some parents who would want their child in a school where there's more diversity in terms of student achievement. No student may be required to enroll in a bridge program that is a continuation school. Now, that, you do have in the letter that it's a voluntary program, and I appreciate that very much. According to California law, continuation schools are for students who are at least sixteen years of age. Now, I've read that law, I've talked to trained legal researchers who have read that, read the, all of the relevant statutes. And I can see how one could tweak it and find wiggle room in the law to allow ninth-grade students in those programs. But in fact, that is not, that is not the intention of the legislature. And I think parents should at least understand that that was not the intention of the legislature when it enabled continuation schools, nor is it the practice in this district in La Cuesta, which tends to only grant admission to ninth graders on rare exceptions. I think that, I think that was my list. I raised the question with Ms. Sawaski about CIF because I read the CIF bylaws and came to the same conclusion that that was problematic. And, oh, and I did check with the Finance Department, the California Department of Education, and the question that came up last time about can a kid be in two schools at one time? No way. It's one, you're either in the continuation school or you're in the high school. And the whole structure of funding, of reporting, of accountability is geared to that. That's just a basic fact. So, you know, those are my, those are things I believe that parents should understand when they're offered the choice to go to the school.
Board members? Well, I first would like to see if Mrs. Sawaski or Dr. Service would like to address any of the points on this list.
A couple of them. Well, one, we were trying, before with the overall, the intent or the, the part that was criticized last time with the original letter was that we needed to make it shorter. So that's, that was one of the goals. And the point of the letter is to have the parents come in, where in that interview, many of the pieces of this are talked about, as well as the really close association with the counselor, the additional assessment for special needs, a lot of things have been talked about tonight. That, that comes up during that. Specifically, the number one in talking about the program improvement sites, all parents do get a letter. It's not this letter. And I could see where, in an interview, you would have to link that. But parents do get a letter letting them know that as a student at that school, they would be entitled to that. Students in the bridge program, as far as being a continuation school, we chose the word alternative high school because that's the technical school term now that Kathy Abney tells me they use for when we get our new, got our new, applied for our new CDS code or are doing so for the independent study. That's the technical word. We use, we used that. We could use continuation. It is a continuation, the old, the old term is continuation. The far, the part about graduating, you know, maybe a student would, a student, a couple of students would be in there. This is really intended for ninth grade primarily. Maybe a couple of 10th graders would be in there. They've opened it up. The CDS code allows for ninth through 12th grade. So if there was a student who wanted to stay in that, sometimes there are students who want to stay in a smaller setting or do that, but it is not intended for that. So yes, if they graduated from the bridge program, they would be graduating with a continuation school degree. But that's not what the program is intended to do at all.
And Ms. Sawaski, should I?
Dr. Noel, did you want the floor?
We should probably explain, we had a phone call, and we were going to exchange these ideas because I wanted my input. And as I prepared them and added a couple more, it occurred to me that I was commenting on a draft prepared by two board members, which would have created a serial communication, a serial meeting. And so I sent back to Ms. Sawaski that I can't do it.
Yeah, and I agree.
So we didn't have this dialogue that I think would have been, would have been, for me at least, very helpful. May I just add one last point, and I see it. I'm having some eye surgery in about a month, and I'll be past all this, okay? But I didn't stress something enough that, to me, is pedagogically, the sense... But I didn't stress something enough that, to me, is pedagogically the centerpiece, that you don't... Given what we understand about education and about kids who are struggling, you don't move kids from an environment of higher expectations to an environment of lower expectations. Because, to quote Jaime Escalante, "Kids rise to the level of expectations." And this is now being demonstrated at countless schools around the country that are called the so-called high flyers. And we're doing that here. And I just... To me, that is just... Goes against everything that I believe in about educational efficacy. Thank you for hearing me out.
And actually, the point of this is to have those students performing at grade-level standards. It isn't... It's not an accelerated program necessarily, but with that additional half a period for each one of those core subjects, that's supposed to be the... That's where the teachers in a lower class size and more strategies that those students can use to get up to grade-level standards. I mean, that's the purpose. It's not to lower the expectations. These are kids who really can do this. They just, for whatever reason, have not been able to achieve grade-level standards. They really have the ability to do so and should be, and that is the expectation. They get in there, they get up to a level in which they are performing, and they get out, and they're in the regular grade-level content areas.
Mrs. Cordero?
I just... I feel like there's some misinformation being given that... Or at least a distorted view of what the board has had great discussion about. And I believe that, Dr. Noel, you've been here when we've had those discussions, that I believe that you have been party when we've talked about the fact that students are not likely to graduate from the bridge program, that the bridge program... They're not... Even while they're in it, all of their classes will not be in the bridge program, that we've been running it at Santa Barbara High School for a year as a pilot program, that this is something that has shown success. And I also, as I know that you support differentiated instruction and differentiated levels of instruction, I'm kind of concerned about the assumption that because students are low-level or low-achievement, that therefore the expectations of them will be low. I happen to work with students who don't... Who are well below college level when they enter college. And it is differentiated levels of instruction, but the expectations for them are that they will succeed and rise to the level of academic achievement that college requires of them. And I think the idea behind the bridge program, I hate to leave this sort of image that the idea of it is somehow to, you know, to push students off in somewhere else, you know, in some little closet or something, because the idea is that the students will be taking part of their program, part of their schedule, in very... With very highly-trained, specialized teachers who will help them achieve what we believe they are capable of achieving, but what they have not yet achieved. And that the other part of their schedule will be in the regular high school curriculum, in the regular high school classes with all the other regular high school students. And that after a year or two at the most, they will then transition into the regular high school environment. And in fact, it really won't even be that much of a transition because they'll already be in the regular high school environment. They'll just be taking some of their classes in classes that are identified as the bridge program. But even those classrooms will be integrated in with the rest of the school. It's not a program that's housed in one little area. They're just fully integrated in with the rest of the high school. So, I just feel like we need to make that clear.
Thank you, Mrs. Cordero. And I also want to be really careful because we're here to talk about the letter and not about the program. So, I'd like to move back to talking about the letter. Mrs. Deacon?
Because I participated in crafting the letter, I would just like to address a couple of things. We consciously decided to use alternative school setting as opposed to continuation school. Continuation schools, along with community day schools, independent study schools, are now all considered alternative schools. And if you look at the California Department of Education website, you'll find that listed as such. So, I don't think that we're trying to hide a term. I think we're trying to use a more accurate term. Actually, I think continuation's kind of an antiquated term. I'm not sure what it really means anymore. What are we continuing? I also would just like to address this notion about standards and expectations are lower, although I know this isn't maybe directly addressed in the letter, but we've heard from staff that are going to be teaching and counseling students in this program, who I think showed a lot of passion for what they were going to do and who I think will have high expectations for their students. So, I think it's really wrong to assume that naturally expectations will be lower.
Or that that is something that should be included in the letter.
Right, right.
I actually do have a suggestion for one sentence at the end of the third paragraph, where it ends, "We believe as parents you share the same goal, and the bridge program is an ideal support to begin moving in the right path." My suggestion would be to add two sentences here. "Our intention is to move students from the bridge program to the full regular high school program within one school year. Any additional time spent in the program would require further discussion and agreement between families and the school."
So, could you read that one more time?
"Our intention is to move students from the bridge program to the full regular high school program within one school year. Any additional time spent in the program would require further discussion and agreement between families and the school."
I think that's fine. I mean, it accurately reflects, I think, what we believe and what our expectations are.
Mr. Herron?
Just... Is there any problem in moving from one to the other? You say after one year. Are there circumstances that would say by the high school, "Sorry, you can't come here." We're not gonna let you... Well, we're not gonna move you out of the bridge program.
It's always voluntary.
It's always voluntary. And I was gonna say this earlier, but I need to emphasize it here. And if we put this, we maybe should even add more. Every nine weeks, a student has an opportunity to move out of the bridge program. So, it's...
And can the high school stop them from moving out? Can they say, "No"?
Oh, no, not at all.
No way, no way, shape, or form?
That's the whole... It's all voluntary. It's met as a support, an intervention-type supportive program.
Because there are already students in the high school.
Well, I guess that's the question. Are they really?
Yes, they are.
What I read here, you're in one or the other. You can't be in both. So, you can't be in the high school if you're in... Well, I don't know if it's accurate or not, but if that's... That's what I'm trying to find out.
Well...
Is that accurate?
Mrs. Cordero, hold a moment. Mrs. Sawaski, let's have you speak to that.
Okay, the enrollment. Dr. Noel is correct in that their primary enrollment is in the bridge program. And the whole reason we have to do that is because we're using that CDS code, as we've been through before.
My point was not that they're in the bridge program, but in a continuation school.
Dr. Noel, you don't have the floor.
With bridge program, which is an alternative setting school. And they have concurrent enrollment, as many of our students do in City College. They have a concurrent enrollment. They have other classes. In this case, they have almost, you know, just as much. It's almost half and half. But it is... They will be... And when they are in the bridge program, they will be enrolled. Their primary... The ADA is collected through a positive attendance through that program. It's not a problem at all in nine weeks to switch.
That's why I want to make sure, is that they don't have to apply and get approved or...
Dr. Noel?
Can they be turned down upon reentry, say, in 10th grade or 11th grade because they have a shortage of credits?
No, they're not going to be having a shortage of credits. They will be there the full day.
Just hypothetically. If some student somehow, worse came to worse, came, wanted out of continuation school, but still was several grades... Quite a bit short of proper credits, had credit deficiency, I guess is your term. Would that student be allowed back in Santa Barbara High School, or would they be redirected for their credit deficiency to a continuation school? Which is what I thought would... One of the things continuation schools were about.
You know, it really depends on the student themselves. They are not... They are considered a student at Santa Barbara High as well. And I know technically they're not, but they are taking classes. So, there are many students in the high school setting that are credit deficient every year. So, a student would not be denied. Let's say at the end of the ninth grade, they didn't do as well. The bridge program is not helping them. They went back into the regular high school. That's their option to do that. They, you know, of course...
Maybe that ought to be in writing.
A lot of this is in the discussion part. And there, as you recall, there was a thick pamphlet that had a lot of additional information that the two principals had shared in the original. And I don't believe Dr. Noel was here for one of the sessions, but there's a lot of other information that included lots of the assessments, the whole... The way the teaching would be delivered, all of the different frequent assessments and how that would be done. There was a... There's a lot of additional information that was going to be done, shared with the parents as they were in the interview and they were really interested. This is just the initial letter sent out to see if they want to come for an interview.
My own suggestion would be that the nine-week information be included in the bridge program description. Right, on the second page that we have here in our attachment. It could be under program highlights, that students are assessed every nine weeks and may move back into the regular high school program. I don't see that anywhere. Is that acceptable?
Let's put it in. Let's put it in.
Yeah, I think it was somewhere, and somehow I think it got taken out.
So, we could put that into the program highlights?
In program highlights?
Yep.
Okay, that's not a problem.
Any further discussion on this? Is there a motion?
We've made... Are we including your two sentences?
You could move to approve the amended letter and amended...
Description?
Description.
Okay. I will move to approve the amended letter and the amended description.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
It carries four, one, with Dr. Noel opposing.
Madam President, I'd just like to say that I appreciate having had a chance to put those up because I could not do it in any other venue. And although I didn't have a plan to put them up, I was just ready to vote.
Well, thank you. It's helpful. We now move on to item E4, approval of sex education curriculum video for fifth and sixth grades.
Well, Robyn Sawaski won the award. She gets to present this as well.
I'm flipping back and forth here, right and left. You should have received, and there are additional copies out on the dais of just from the website, the Health and Human Development brief description. And I know board members have been able to come and view the videos. This is a standard part of the health curriculum. Four years ago, or maybe it was five years ago, there was a video that was selected, one for fifth grade, one for sixth grade. There are plenty out there, there on the dais. And we were in the selection process this year. We started at the beginning of the school year with the Wellness Council, and Amy Alzina, in her description of the... What the work had been this year, talked about the selection process for the new videos. It's a good thing to update this, particularly this kind of video regularly. So, we were already in the process of doing that. Toward the end of the school year, there were a group of parents who viewed a video. And by the way, all parents can view the videos all, you know, any time during the school year. Letters are sent out at the school, letting them know they can do that and when the video would be shown. There was some criticism or that the particular video that they saw... I'm still not 100% sure it was the one that we were using. But it doesn't matter because we have new ones now. And we had a special parent meeting at La Cumbra where Ms. Alzina and I came, and we had parents who were concerned, who'd seen the other one that viewed it, and they all thought it was the new selection is good. So, we have a fifth-grade boys, fifth-grade girls, that's called "Just Around the Corner", and a sixth-grade girls and sixth-grade boys called "Let's Just Talk." It's in a format of a talk show, and so we're asking for your approval. I think I mentioned last time that we don't really need board approval for this, but be given the talk about it. And all we wanted the board to be clear that what we are approving.
Thank you. And I have to say that I really feel like the title of this agenda item is really a misnomer because it is not sex education in the classical sense. It's health education. Once we got a chance to see it, it is really just about children and their developing bodies. Any comments on this one? Any board... Any public comment?
I'll just say I watched both of them, and this is far superior.
All right, is there a motion?
Oh, I just wanted to say I watched them too, and it took me way back, I have to say, when my kids were this age. But I... And I think they're absolutely appropriate. So, I would move that we give our approval of the use of these two curriculum videos for fifth and sixth graders.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five, zero. Now, E5, selection and approval of a name for the new alternative high school.
We need to submit a name for the alternative high school. We've gone through this discussion in the past, but we're really to the point of coming up with an appropriate name.
Thank you.
Unless Robyn Sawaski wants to give a report.
I think it's all in front of you.
Right. And I noticed that Mrs. Abney is not here tonight, probably just to try to avoid the frustration of this particular process. So, board members, Mrs. Deacon?
I just want to say, reading these names, I have to really take my hat off to Kathy Abney because I know she spent a lot of time coming up with a name that she and her group had collaborated on, and then we kind of sent her back for geographic names. And she spent some time with Walter Tompkins and came up with all these. I actually like the first name that they suggested, Alta Vista. I think... This is my personal opinion. I'm not sure any of these fly. I'd like to hear what other board members say, but these are all such commonplace names. I think there would be confusion if we were to go with some of these. So, unless somebody can convince me, otherwise I would say go back to their original recommendation of Alta Vista.
Other board members? Mrs. Cordero?
I just feel... And I know she's given us the explanation, and I missed something, I guess, because I'm still not quite clear why there needs to be a name change.
When... What we're doing for the compliance reasons is we have to apply for a new CDS code for all of our independent study programs. And in order to do that, to apply for it, you have to have a name of the school.
But we could stay with La Cuesta, right? Or no?
That would be confusing.
Be pretty confusing.
Oh, because they're gonna be two separate CDS codes?
Right.
Okay, okay.
And why are they going to be two separate codes? Why don't I just forward into La Cuesta?
Dr. Noel?
Refresh my memory.
We have to have a separate school. For the number of independent student... Study students that we have, it has to be a separate school. We recently found this out through the work of Ana Hernandez and Kathy Abney, working with the state. They said alternative high schools that have a special independent program, it has to be a separate school because of the number of students. So, all of our students will be under that. That's where the homeschool Santa Barbara ninth-through-12th grade students are also housed under that new CDS code. So, that added additional students.
Can you remind me, it's an independent study. It's... Is it ninth-through-12th only, or is it seventh?
It's nine-through-12th, and our other homeschool, Santa Barbara, is K-through-8.
Mr. Herron?
Remind me how they came up with Alta Vista. What was the genesis of that?
Well, I don't want to go out on a limb, but I mean Kathy talked about, you know, the translation of that as high view, high sight, setting high expectations. They liked it.
Yeah, it was a long process of talking about various names.
But it was a collaborative effort with a group of...
Yes.
That's the only name I will... I'll go along with Susan. I won't sit here and choose for all these other names.
I'm surprised the oak isn't on here.
The oak?
Yeah. Strong, deep roots. Ground resistant.
Oaks is Oaks Nursery School, so... Oaks is a nursery school, so I don't think they'd want that.
Or a day spa. Dr. Noel, do you have an opinion on this?
I just said it.
Okay, you want it to be the oak. And Mrs. Cordero?
I just wondered, in her... When they had originally come up with Alta Vista, there had been a collaborative process. Did... Alta Vista, there had been a collaborative process, did, was there any indication that any of these had more support than others from any of the staff or?
My understanding is that she put the three or four, I think she had them on her last one, in here, but these just came from Walter Tompkins, so many of them were not even discussed. She also, by the way, gave me a pile, she collected the names of every single alternative school in all of California to have in case we needed more, so she really did her research.
But no, I don't think that, that staff even got a chance to see this list.
So, I'd like to make a motion that our new name for the alternative school, high school, is Alta Vista.
Alta Vista.
Was it, there was academy?
It could be Alta Vista Independent High School, Alta Vista Academy, Alta Vista Independent Academy, just Alta Vista, Alta Vista High School.
What was their recommendation?
They didn't have one, they gave the academy choice.
Actually, she did, there were two variations, one was academy and there was one other one.
That's true, but this is an alternative high school, and I would like to include that in the title so it doesn't become something else in people's minds.
Mrs. Cordero.
When she originally was recommending Alta Vista, Alta Vista, and the full title, wasn't she, wasn't that the recommendation for changing La Cuesta?
No.
The name of La Cuesta?
No, that was a different, separate agenda.
Okay, because I just wanted to say maybe, maybe her, how she was recommending it was relevant to that, but I agree that I think it should be alternative high school.
So Alta Vista Alternative High School. And that's your motion, Mrs. Deacon?
Yes, it is.
And I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Dr. Noel?
I said aye.
You said aye, okay, thank you. And it passes unanimously. With that, we are on to item E5, sorry, F1, report on Santa Barbara Elementary School District Report Card.
Well, this is a result of a long period of work on the part of many people, a lot of staff members, very capable teachers, and Robyn Swawski wanted the board to know what the new elementary report card would look like.
Okay, and you all should have a copy of the Standards-Based Report Card Teacher-Parent Guide, and this is a draft, it says draft up at the top. And I know we have a couple of new board members, so I won't make a long drawn-out presentation on this, because I know you've gotten a lot of information in the past, but this process did begin for revising the former report card, which was a Standards-Based Report Card. It began in the 2005, 2006 school year, and we started with grade-level teacher collaboration across the district, and we really actually did that for a couple of years, but the meetings were really focused on identifying the essential standards in language arts and math for students to be successful at the next grade level. So there was a lot of that work with second-grade teachers asking third-grade teachers, what is it that's really important that our students leave with to be able to be successful in the next grade? So there, there was a lot of that. Next, a report card committee was formed, and they used all that feedback from the teachers to kind of narrow the focus and to really align the essential standards from kindergarten through sixth grade. What we found in the former report card was that as you looked at literacy, it jumped around, and it wasn't really aligned with the strands and the, and the critical standards. So we made sure we looked at the blueprints from the STAR, the STAR released items, and we looked to see which items is the state really feeling as far as the, the standards are most critical. So we did all of that, along with feedback from teachers that are actually in the classroom, so that we could be very clear on what was essential. And as you know, we started the original Standards-Based Report Card when standards were first adopted, and as you work through something and the assessments, the STAR assessments change, you really get a better view on what's critical and what's not from year to year. We also work with UCSB professors, and we have a couple of experts in our own district here, Dr. Davis Hayden is one of them, he has a lot of expertise in evaluation, so we, we met often with these people. Last year, the pilot report card was very much simpler than the one I'm going to show you in a middle, in a minute, and it was based on feedback from a couple of, there were several grade levels the year before that, that used the pilot report card, and we had some very positive feedback. So we went forward in a more field test kind of manner and had it out there with everyone, and we found that there was, from parent and teacher feedback, ongoing during the school year. So we had parent feedback after the first conference time in November, that was more in an informal manner, just talking with teachers, and then we had a separate written feedback with parents at the second conference time and second reporting period, and then we also had written feedback from teachers. And from that, there was a lot of positive, but there were a couple things that, that we heard over and over again, that it was too simplistic, that we needed the essential standards back on the report card, they didn't want a great big, long thing like they had before, they wanted it simpler looking like the other one, but they wanted more on there, and they also wanted to bring back the, the four, meaning advanced, and we went one, two, three before, but, but they wanted that four to be able to highlight those students who were truly advanced. And so we used all of that, you know, the original one was, was done with feedback, and we listened to the critique and when it's actually used out there, what we needed to do. So we brought that back in a form that really is, it approximates what the No Child Left Behind standards are. So Dave, do you want to put that first? I'm using a sixth grade example to just briefly point out some of the, what the report card looks like. I know there is a sample inside here that highlights some of the part, but this is a little bit bigger. This looks pretty standard as far as, and I apologize, we've made it as large as we could, we broke up a page into pieces so that we could see it. The grading scale over here, advanced, proficient on the far left in the legend, in the box over here, advanced, proficient, basic, below basic, and not assessed. There is a part where it can show that that particular area or strand is not assessed. There's a section there for English Language Development, 4, 3, 2, 1, advanced, intermediate, early intermediate, and beginning, so we can show that, and then there's the citizenship, and then our attendance. Can you put the next one on?
All right, I don't have it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have it, that's why. This shows one page, there is a language arts that comes next, but I just wanted to point out, here's, here's a math section. I chose sixth grade because this is the very longest report card with the most standards on it. Kindergarten is much smaller, so this is the biggest it gets, and it's really only two pages, so every one of them is only two pages. We tried to keep true to what parents and teachers wanted. You can see that underneath mathematics achievement, numbers sense and operations is one strand, algebra and functions is another strand, and underneath those strands are the essential standards, and those come straight from the frameworks. A lot of districts choose to put it in like kid and parent-friendly language, or, you know, something that's kind of a little bit simpler sometimes. We felt that from the pilot, that our, our parents are wanting the real standard, and we found also that in trying to do that, sometimes it changes the standard slightly, particularly the depth and breadth of that standard. So we are using the actual standard, and if there is need for explanation, and what does it look like, then teachers will provide that. There's also the three trimesters, and that's, that's what it looks like as far as the basic report card. What I wanted to point out as far as a couple pieces of the Teacher-Parent Guide, this is draft, so I appreciate any kind of, if there are grammatical type, you know, that, we've, we've made, we've found so many in the last stages, so we really would like that, and any other suggestions? One page I want to have Dave put up. We can just do, do the top part of, this shows the components of a Standards-Based System, talks about how the content standards come from the Department of Ed, they describe what a student should know and be able to do at every, at each given grade level, then the curriculum or the roadmap that teachers use to ensure the instruction target standards, then the assessments that really measure the learning and the extent to which the student has met the standards, and then of course, this reporting tool that allows teachers to communicate accurately. The bottom part, if you can slip it up, this is a critical part, it defines the proficiency levels, and as we said, it approximates the same proficiency levels, meaning that we don't use the exact cut points and all of that exactly as the state of California would use for the STAR, but this is as close as we can get to showing how a student is consistently moving forward. We wanted to have one type of grading or proficiency level so that parents aren't confused when they get the, the test results from the STAR, they can see, and they, and they can also see during the year how their student is progressing. A critical part is over on the left, and it talks about how at the elementary level, and I have to say, this was a conversation that we've talked about for three years, and districts do this both ways. I'll explain what I mean. There are three reporting periods. For the first two reporting periods, students are evaluated based on their progress and in relationship to the end-of-year standards. In other words, students will not receive a mark of proficient or advanced before achieving the end-of-year grade level expectations. Students making good progress towards meeting grade level standards may be at basic or below basic, and that would be expected from a student who doesn't, hasn't had that information yet, and could very well be at proficient or advanced by the end of the grading period. So the final grading period then is, of course, reflects the achievement of the whole time period. There will be students that will be advanced in the beginning if they have mastered all of those essential elements within that strand. That kind of conversation goes on all over the state, and different districts do it in different ways. The difficulty in having the mark, let's say at proficient at the first trimester is you have to then decide across the grade level very consistently, what does that mean for that particular strand with all those standards under it? What is the exact point in which you're moving toward proficiency? What would you be, you know, what would be considered proficient at that point? And that's a long conversation that, that right now, we are, you know, we're aiming for consistency across the, the schools and across teachers, even within a school, and I, I doubt that many districts are at that point where they can really mark that. So this is what our team came up with, as I said, lots of discussion about it. And then the last couple pages just talks about the analysis process, and I wanted to share with parents, I'll put it up there, it's a lot of words. Maybe just, Dave, maybe just the top part, that just before making a determination about student proficiency and marking it, that teachers really analyze students' progress over the whole course of the reporting period. It talks about assessments. Over on the right, it talks about collecting key samples of student work, so it's not just one test, one assessment that, that gives you an idea if a student has mastered that standard, it's a multiple group of evidence, and also analyzing that entire, entire body of evidence in comparison to what is considered proficient. So it's, and then it gives some examples of the body of evidence. At the back of the guide then, and Dave, we don't have it, is just all the standards. So I thought it was important that the essential content standards, kindergarten through sixth grade, would be available for all teachers certainly, and for all parents, so they can see below and, you know, above and where their child is going. So again, this is a draft, and we are, you also have a letter in there, in the board agenda that was sent out to all staff this spring explaining how we are working forward with the grade, the report card, as well as GradeWorks, which is the electronic version of the report card. I've talked to Davis Hayden, who is working with that company, and if you have more questions about that particular part of it, he's available to answer questions as well. So I'll take questions or comments.
Mrs. Deacon.
Excuse me if I ask some new questions, since this is the absolute first time I've seen this, but, so you're saying that if a student has the potential to be proficient but hasn't perhaps been exposed or assessed on some of the standards, they would get a basic?
What they would get a basic on is only on, they, they wouldn't be counted down for standards or, yeah, standards, pieces of a content area they haven't covered yet. It would only be on standards where they're make, maybe the, the standard is worked on all year long, it's a very large, deep standard, and they're making significant progress, but maybe they're not, they're not at proficient yet, but they're basic in that standard. So there's a group of standards, as you can see in that strand.
Right.
So if students, let's say in the first trimester, had worked on three of those standards, and they'd actually mastered those standards, they could absolutely get proficient, despite the fact that there are three standards in there that they haven't even covered yet.
Okay, that, that clears that up for me.
But there is also a designator for not assessed.
Exactly, right.
Okay. The other question I had to do was actually with the letter to the teachers, where it sounds like they have latitude to do a multiple variety of approaches. I'm curious how that would work for a parent who had a student, say, in a grade where one teacher's using one version and another teacher's using another version.
It would just be a matter of, it's more that the teacher, the parent is going to get a hard copy, it's not going to look any different.
You need to remember, this is elementary school also, so all, even if you have multiple teachers, they're going to be putting it in on the same form.
That's true, but the, what the parent gets won't look any different. The, the teacher could be using the grade book that puts the grade into the report card. The report card from GradeWorks is going to look just like what you're seeing.
All right, so it generates this, no matter how they do the entry.
Yes, and the reason, the reason we did that was, as you can see from the letter, we had, we had a really rough year in field testing this report card, and in use, not the report card itself, but in using GradeWorks. And so I don't want any teacher with everything else that's going on to have any kind of stress about using this, and there are many teachers that just can't wait to do the GradeWorks part, because they want to, they are very happy with the electronic part of it and feel comfortable with it. Davis is doing training, as you can see in the letter, small groups, making sure everyone understands it, and one thing I forgot to, to mention, and this is important, the principals, we had a lot of people working on this, the principals are going to be the main trainers for this in their school, so they're going to devote special staff meetings in the beginning of the school year to go over this and to work with each one of their teachers about the report card itself. GradeWorks and with Davis is a separate type of training, but we're making sure that the message is clear and consistent and the same throughout the whole district.
Dr. Noel.
I'm a little confused, just trying to read this. So the grading scale will be A for advanced, P for proficient, B for basic, BB for below basic, and NA for not assessed.
That's correct.
What happened to far below basic?
We did not use exactly, that's why we said approximates, that we used a one, two, three during the pilot, three being proficient, and then next, I believe, was like approaching standards and then not meeting standards. And the four, or the advanced or exceeding standards, was what the teachers and parents really wanted. Then we started having another discussion about, then we're getting so close to what the STAR and No Child Left Behind uses, that's what we're using.
Now, where, where do those appear? I'm, I'm reading here.
On the report card?
Why don't you go back to that cover page?
Those, those blank squares.
Right there.
Yes, the blank squares is.
So there's one, there's one grade for the whole strand, not for each standard within the strand?
That's correct.
Okay.
Oh, oh, I, I was looking at the grading scale, you mean where do you put them?
Yeah.
Just go down.
Here, here, and here, yeah.
Yes.
All right, so.
They go up on the top, this is.
So how, how is that, that's an aggregate grade, for example, under word analysis, there are four essential standards you have, and so there's some kind of an aggregation rule.
That's correct, that's.
To come out with a single grade for those four standards.
That's correct, and that's the body of evidence, that's the, we do have individual, our assessment committee, which is a whole other piece of the process, our assessment committee developed assessments for each individual. committee developed assessments for each individual standard, and then we also have that available with our curriculum, so we can use all of those standards and put them together for that, that grade. One thing teachers did not like was having each separate standard separated out and having an assessment, and that was part of the feedback as well. They really appreciated a more global look on...
I understand. And this, is this what the parents are going to get? The one you have on there?
All, that's a, that's a sample of a part of the report card. If you look...
The parents will get.
Yes, exactly.
All right, let me pursue that point. If, if you're aggregating, back off. This is overwhelming, at least for a lot of parents I know. This is, there's so much stuff on this printed page. Okay, then, and then I look and I see, well, you're aggregating four items under word analysis, you're aggregating three items under reading comprehension, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm wondering, since you're only reporting for the strand aggregating, why have all that detail on there? I could see a reference to some definitions, what word analysis means, i.e. there are four standards, but you could make this a lot less cluttered and convey this exact same evaluation information.
Well, that's what we had originally. It was, it was, we didn't have anything under it. We had just the strand, and that was one of the criticisms, if you will, from parents and teachers, that they actually wanted the standards on there.
Even though they're not going to get a detailed indication, for example, under word analysis, that, that this kid only did B, yeah, basic, on recognize the origins and meaning of frequently used foreign words in English.
You know what I think I should emphasize too, is at the elementary level, we have a first trimester in November and a second trimester in February, and those are parent conferences every time. So every time a parent gets one of these, they sit down with the teacher and they see the, the student work and that, we call it here, a body of evidence for that. So they will see the work in those standards and get that information. It's very different than just receiving something home in the mail.
Let me ask the other question I had. If you're not using, there's fairly standardized meanings of what far below basic means in terms of how far behind a kid is, and the same thing with below basic and, and basic. And it would seem to me to be very helpful, if painful, for parents to know that their kid is, by any other labeling system, their kid is at least two, maybe three, four years behind grade level, and the implications of that. I mean, that's profoundly important.
And that is part of the conference.
And if you're that far behind in sixth grade, you're probably not going to get out of, you're going to be really far behind when you enter high school, and you may not get out of high school without some interventions of some kind. I think families really need to understand exactly the implications of that.
And that, again, that's the reason for the conference, and many teachers very successfully show, of course with no names on it, they show an example of a proficient piece of work for grade level standard, and then they, you know, in, in comparison, so that parents really understand how far behind their child might be, or how advanced their child might be, or how close they are to reaching standard.
Any other board member comments or questions?
Just a last thought on that is that because someone who's really far behind needs, needs a coherent and comprehensive intervention program. And I don't think many parents understand the need and certainly not what a coherent and comprehensive intervention program consists of. Therefore, they don't know what to ask for. They don't know what to demand for their kids, and I think they should be empowered.
I agree, and I think we're going to have, not that anything is a silver bullet, but we had our teachers just complete today, seven days of training with our Read 180 program, which is exactly intended, now, we're talking fourth through eighth grade. But we got rave reviews on this program as far as being very comprehensive and very targeted. So I agree, parents do need that. We have many, many interventions in our schools for those students who are not scoring at grade level.
Mrs. Deacon.
I hesitate to ask any more of our teachers, but I'm wondering if in these parent-teacher conferences, they could ask the parent, how do you like this report card? Did it work for you? Maybe you're already doing this, and then the teachers could provide back to you their feedback.
Yes, we absolutely expect to do that this year because that's what we did last year, and it's significantly different based on that feedback. So we, you know, it, it's, it probably won't say draft on it, but it's in constant refinement. And so if we find that something doesn't work, whether it's format or content, we're going to change it. And now it's very easy to change. It's not, you know, hundreds of copies of the, you know, expensive, what do you call it? There's three copies.
Dupligets, yeah.
Yes.
I would like to say that as an elementary parent, this is much, much better than the form that my son got last year. And it's also much, much better than the forms that my sons got two years ago. And so I really see this as significant progress over both the sort of first draft form last year and the original form. One question I have, is this life size, like this? Or how is it, how big is it going to be?
It's exactly this size. That's a little bit smaller in there, and of course, those boxes that are in the guide that explain what things are, those are not on the report card.
Right.
It looks just like this, only it's just, the sixth grade is the busiest looking one. We tried, that was one thing they want, teachers and parents wanted it on two pages max, and so that's why we did it like this. If that changes and they say it's too hard to read, we'll change it again.
The one thing that I would suggest is on the guide, that there be an arrow in a box to the reporting periods that explains that that, that 1, 2, and 3 is the reporting period. It's very clear when you're going to, when you get the report card as you're sitting down with the first one, but just for this, for the, this guide.
So on page four, on the very bottom right-hand corner...
I'm actually looking on page three.
Or three.
On page three, I would put it in the, maybe for the center one, wherever you can fit it in, where it says 1, 2, 3, because there's no explanation here of reporting periods or, you know, there is in the text.
If you look on the next page, we put the other things that we couldn't fit.
I see.
So we've tried to cover everything so that it wasn't too busy.
So I was, yeah, busy looking on page one. And I actually would see if you could put that onto page one because that's where people will look for explanations, is on page one. But again, I don't know, visually it doesn't work, then it's great that it's on page, the second page.
Yeah, I actually, that was, I think Dr. Noel and I both were going, what are those boxes for?
Okay, and it's on the second page.
I think it's important to label them.
So maybe we can switch, we'll try, I will try to see if that could work on page one, and we'll put something that's maybe not as important on page two. I'll try to see if we can visually do that.
Maybe. Then I'll, then I'll ask Mrs. Cordero's question. The report card, I assume, is also in Spanish.
Yes, Mina is doing that as we speak, and the guide will be as well.
And when, I actually also just love this teacher-parent guide because no parent has ever gotten anything like this, and this is fantastic. When will they get it? Will they get it at their conference with their student for the first reporting period?
You know, we haven't really talked about that yet.
Okay.
I, I think when...
I assume that would be the last possible date. It makes sense to...
Right, I think ahead of time would be good, maybe when the message goes out in the folder or whatever, that, I mean, because you have to set up conferences.
Right.
So there's something that says conference time is coming, and in, you know, any time prior to the first conference time would be good, and then, you know, go over it certainly.
Okay.
Public comment?
Mr. Lane Wheeler.
Good evening, Lane Wheeler, Center of Teachers Association. Just a couple of comments on this. SPTA really does appreciate very much the voluntary nature of the implementation for the 9, 10 school year, and we would like to thank Ms. Swasky for including that. While there's a fairly honest assessment of the GradeWorks presentation that was done, I think it's been somewhat underestimate or understated here. This was the, the great earthquake of workshops in terms of it being a disaster. It was a tsunami of a, of a workshop, and people still haven't recovered from that. I think there's a lot of reticence yet on the part of the instructional staff to, to jump into this. Just a couple of comments. SPTA, of course, is always concerned about increasing workload, and the training for GradeWorks, while it's voluntary and some folks will take it on, others may not be. There's always a question of, do we have the proper machinery at sites and the training to do those kinds of things that we need to get done? So that becomes a technology question, and if there's any sort of an online resource to it, then we need to make sure that's up and working. Oftentimes, teachers are taking their report cards home and spending hours upon hours putting these things together, so it's nice to have the accessibility from a home link as opposed to having to be, you know, at school late nights getting these things ready. A, a sample of the assessments for the first term were given to me from a third-grade teacher last year. There was over 30 pages of assessments for just the language arts section, that does include the math and the others, of assessments, and not necessarily were those embedded in the existing curriculum. What we're looking to do is things smarter, not just more work. Having theses embedded in the curriculum where you're testing those things already, whether it be through the open court or whatever, is a much more efficient way to use those, and they are standards-based, so I would encourage those to be used as opposed to another additional source, because we really are taking away from classroom instructional time when we're, we're taking those ti, that time to test kids. Then it becomes a grading issue, and then it becomes a, you know, calculation issue. I am concerned about principals being the trainer on this one. The technology, technological competency of the principals, I think, is not necessarily an even line. I'm sure there are some very technologically capable folks and maybe others who might not be, but when the principal has a pretty busy day already, I'm wondering where they're going to find time to make sure that this training does take place, which then becomes a work issue again. I, I have not heard the same thing Ms. Swasky has, and I've heard her say a number of times that many teachers have asked for this. I haven't had many teachers call SPTA and ask. We have not surveyed, and I'll be the first to acknowledge that. I'm just not sure that that term, all or many, is where we really are in terms of the acceptance of the staff. Thank you. I am concerned also, having developed the first report card as a teacher in the district, that the constant changing of report cards, while made better, may not necessarily be a good thing. Having done these reports many, many times with hundreds and hundreds of parents, I've gone through all those, shown the standards, talked about the assessments, and had the parents ask me at the end of the conference, how's my child doing? You know, we really want to make this thing work. I'm not sure this is going to do it. Thank you.
All right, we will now take a break. We're running a little over schedule, so let's make it a 10-minute break with no objection from the board. F2 report on the California School Age Families Education Program, CalSafe.
Well, we promised to provide you additional information on the, on the funding reductions for the CalSafe program. Robin Swasky?
Yes, and I do have Jenny Martinez here, who is the coordinator, one of the coordinators for child development and directly oversees the CalSafe program. She did, I know you got the backup attachment that describes the process as far as the tier three flexibility, and so I won't go into all of that. But Jenny is here to just briefly review that and then specifically answer your questions. Jenny?
Thank you, Robin. Good evening. I am here to answer any of your questions that you may have, but before we do that, I'd like to give you a little mini history lesson about CalSafe as I prepared to come tonight to speak to you about the CalSafe program. I was interested in knowing a little bit more about CalSafe. I recently became a coordinator about five years ago, but I have been with the district since 1977, so I remember always CalSafe with us or a program like CalSafe. So as I went back very quickly, in 1974, the California legislation passed Bill 1860, and established the California School Age Parenting and Infant Development Program. And that basically authorized the secondary districts to offer parenting programs, and it was called SAPID. In 1978, the Santa Barbara School District was awarded a grant, and it was designated at that time the Parent and Child Enrichment Center, PACE. And you can still find documents in this district that refer to PACE. A lot of community members and staff still call it the Pace Center, but that is gone. At that time, the award was given for an enrollment of about 24 students and 24 infants, toddlers. In 1990, in the, in the mid 1990s, Dos Pueblos and San Marcos High School were added, and they had Pace Centers as well. And then, I believe, in the late 1990s, the Dos Pueblos Pace closed. In 1998, the CalSafe program was established by Senate Bill 1064, and that stands for California School Age and Families Education. The program began serving expectant and parenting students in the year 2000, 2001. So that brings us pretty much up to the present time. It is a wonderful program, supports the expectant and parenting students, and really works to, to move them towards graduation. We also tried to deliver resources to them so that they can be successful in their graduation and after they graduate, and we provide the childcare for their children. We are authorized to take children up to their kindergarten year. So we normally take infants and toddlers, but sometimes we get very young parents, and we can keep them for a longer period of time. If you've had an opportunity to read the little information page that was provided, you'll see that in the past couple of years, we've been able to serve 70 to 90 prenatal and parenting teens and up to 30 to 50 infant toddlers. And now with the fiscal crisis that we have, the CalSafe program was moved into tier three funding, and that gives local administrators the flexibility to use the funding in, for other programs. So at the same time that it was placed in tier three, the state cut the budget by 15% for the 2008-09 school year, and it will cut an additional almost 5% in the 09-10 school year. So at simultaneously, as it reads here and as I wrote, the district will sweep an additional 30%. So we're left with a smaller budget, but we do plan to serve infants and toddlers at the Santa Barbara High School CalSafe Center, probably anywhere between 8 and 10. It's an expensive program because the ratios are so low. We have to have 1 to 3, one adult for every 3 infant and toddler. So, let's see. I also wrote that we have tentatively shut down the San Marcos High School CalSafe Center. We are looking at, we had to release 1.5 teacher and 3 assistants, and we kept the 3 teachers. They are expensive, but with infants and toddlers, we have, not only have to have very good ratios, but we cannot leave infants and toddlers with an assistant, a teacher. It has to always be present. So if we have absences, or we have the head teacher, Judy Daniel, who has gone to a CalSafe meeting, it could potentially leave an assistant by themselves, and we simply can't do that. We are license-exempt, so, but we do follow licensing regulations. The Community Action Commission Head Start is working with us, and they are writing a grant, early head start, to potentially bring to the San Marcos High School site so that we could continue services to those students who need childcare. The students will continue to receive services through the current CalSafe program. Judy Daniel is making arrangements to, to, of course, offer resources to students, to support them, help them in any way that we can, but we will not be able to offer those childcare services for more students than the 9 or 10. So how can I answer your questions? And if I don't have the answers, I can certainly try to find out.
Board members? Mrs. Deacon.
Thank you for coming and explaining...
Thank you for coming and explaining. It looks like you, and you mentioned this, that there were as many as thirty to fifty toddlers in this program last year. Is that right?
That's correct.
And the drop, though, is to nine. That seems like a big drop when it's fifty percent of the program.
Well, yes, it is a big drop. Last year, we were able to serve more students, or children, I should say, because not only did we have the regular staff, but then we had brought on some additional staff as long-term subs. One of the things about this program is that it fluctuates dramatically. You'll have parents who come in with their children and then they'll drop out for a period of time and then they'll come back in and then they'll drop out. So when we talk about thirty to fifty infants and toddlers, we're talking over the year. So we may have, you know, ten or twelve at one time at one site and then maybe up to fifteen at another site, but then it'll change. So at any one given time, we're probably serving maybe thirty-five.
And how does the typical day work? Do the students come and drop off their child before class? And then do they come and visit during the day? Or do they just come when the school day is over to pick them up?
Well, normally, we open our center at seven-thirty and the girls can bring, typically, the mothers can bring their children to the center before school starts. So they will bring their child in, spend a little bit of time. At the beginning of the school year, it's just like going into a kindergarten class. Children are screaming and yelling and, you know, very upset that their mommies are leaving. But then they kind of get into the rhythm of the school year. They'll come in, they'll drop off their child, they'll sign their child in, they'll make sure that their child has a clean diaper. There's record keeping to be done by the parent and the teacher as the child comes in. And then the day will begin. The students go to class. They're certainly allowed to come back in during class times. If a mother needs to breastfeed, she's allowed to come back and nurse her baby. And then the children have their day. They have their breakfast or their formulas, their bottle, whatever. But there is a breakfast time for the toddlers. There's some indoor activity time, outdoor activity time, nap time. Typically, the mothers will come back at lunchtime to spend some time with their children and then they'll come after school to pick them up.
Thank you. Mrs. Cordero?
I had two questions, one you kind of alluded to. The first one was going to be how, I mean, is there any attempt to get the fathers involved with the parenting? And then the second question is kind of connected to that, which is, one of the goals is better improved parenting skills. And I was wondering if there are classes, parenting classes connected to this that the students are expected to take in order to have their children there?
Well, we do work really hard to get the fathers involved. We normally have maybe two or three fathers that come. But we do, you know, we do get them. And yes, there is a parenting and life skills course that is taught by the teachers so that they teach the parents about their child's development, how to parent. Calm is come in, they bring in a variety of speakers to support those young parents. Certainly, there are assignments and, you know, reading assignments. And it's taught like a regular course and the teachers actually give a grade as well.
Mr. Herron?
You said that the thirty to fifty from the past year wasn't thirty to fifty all year long. It was sort of a mixture. On the nine, is that also a mixture where you have three or four now and four or five?
No, we anticipate that we'll have nine to ten the entire school year, but they may not be the same nine or ten. So if once somebody drops out, then we'll bring in another child.
Did you take anybody from San Marcos in that program?
I can't answer that question. I can find out for you. My understanding is that every student was given an opportunity to apply for these slots now. And we created a sort of point system based on whether, if this student was a senior, a junior, a sophomore, how far they were, how close they were to graduation, how good their attendance had been and their history of attendance had been in the past. And so students are being brought in because these are very limited and valuable childcare slots. So we want to make sure that we're bringing in students that are very serious about graduating and moving forward towards that diploma.
Were Santa Barbara High School students given any priority versus San Marcos?
My guess is that Santa Barbara High School will have probably mostly Santa Barbara High School. I can't say for sure, only because that's where the childcare is. Santa Barbara High School students may not want to bring their children all the way to Santa Barbara High School to drop off their child and then return to school. I don't know. In the past, we've had some transfers happen where if we only had space at Santa Barbara High and a student was attending Dos Pueblos or San Marcos, then a transfer would be given and they could come to this school and have the childcare and then continue in their education. But I'm not quite sure how it's all going to fall out in the fall, but my guess is that it will probably be mostly Santa Barbara High School students.
How many long-term subs did you not hire back?
One half-time teacher that we used periodically and, yeah, one assistant.
For me, it's very hard to sit here and feel like we're directly responsible for such extreme hardship on very specific students. This is very difficult to hear. I'm wondering what community resources there are out there for these students, if there are any, that you're directing them to?
We directed them to the county, the Alternative Payment Program, which the county runs. And basically, they have to come into the office and fill out an application and make sure that they're eligible, income-eligible for that program. And what happens is that the student or the parent is responsible for finding childcare. And then if, because they're eligible, income-eligible, the Alternative Payment will pay that childcare person to care for the child. So if there was a spot, for instance, at First Presbyterian and the student wanted their child to be enrolled at that site and they had some sort of agreement with the Alternative Payment Program, then they could enroll their child there and then the county Alternative Payment Program would pay for that slot.
Although the reality is that there are very few infant spots in Santa Barbara.
There are very few infant toddler slots. It's a humongous need.
Does that pay for a person if a student can just hire one?
Yes, but it has to be a provider that the Alternative Payment Program has approved. So it just can't be like, you know, my sister over here.
Okay. Board members, Mr. Herron?
I just want to check my numbers.
Sure.
You say we now have approximately $210,000.
Correct.
And we've lost $161,000 in the last two years.
That's, in the next, yes, last year and this year, we'll lose that much.
Each year? So that's a total of, you used to have $361,000 for, say, thirty students. That's $10,000 a student. You now have $210,000 for ten students. It's now $21,000 a student. How do we justify that?
Well, again, we're going to carry the three teachers who are the most expensive employees. And that, again, is because of the ratios that have to be, that we choose and we feel are the best policies to follow. So we want to make sure that the ratios are correct and that we aren't leaving children with just an assistant. So that is part of it. And then we still would have some money left there, but we're being guided by the fiscal department and we're being told to, that there may be additional cuts coming and so that we need to be very conservative. So the budget isn't going to be totally used. We're trying to be as conservative as possible and run the program, offer services, but not be caught in a position where we're going to be, you know, put in a position of we don't have enough money.
Any other questions or comments on this? I know for me that this would be a priority to put money towards. So thank you, Ms. Martinez.
And as I said, we potentially will have the Community Action Commission Head Start money, the early Head Start grant, and that will put us back in business at San Marcos. So we're hopeful that that will be, that will come. And as I mentioned, it's not going to be announced until September, October, but we're holding the CalSafe San Marcos site open or just holding it right there. And hopefully, we'll be able to reopen that site and start serving students and children at San Marcos as well.
So it could potentially just be closed for a little over a month?
That's right.
Okay.
Moving on to item F three, report on the unfunded liability for management and confidential employee benefits.
We've been proposing action on this to reduce our future liability for some time. The last time we discussed this, last fall, the board asked to wait for the actuarial study. We did get that actuarial study and we're bringing back ideas to be able to curtail our future liability here. Dr. Robertson is Director of Personnel Services.
Thank you, good evening. While working and talking about the fiscal recovery plan, it was identified that post-retirement benefits for management and confidential employees was an unfunded liability that has a huge impact on the district's future well-being. You have a copy of Board Policy 4350 or 51, depending upon which paragraph you read, outlining the current health and welfare benefits for management and confidential employees that have been in place since 2000. On February 11th, 2009, we received the final copy of the Post-Retirement Health Benefits Actuary Report that we requested and have reviewed that. So for your consideration, the fiscal and personnel departments, who did spend a lot of time going over this, are proposing the board freeze those management and confidential employees who currently qualify for these benefits and have served ten years or more as management confidential employees in the district effective June 30th of 2010. First look showed approximately fifteen current certificated classified management and confidential employees who qualified as of this date. More specifically, though, the breakdown is fourteen staff members are of retirement age and qualify for ten or more years right now, as of today. Five staff members are not of retirement age but already qualify for the ten or more years criteria. If current employees, or some other considerations you will need to talk about. These are negotiated kind of items and there are certainly a lot of other options. But that any management confidential employee hired after July 1, 2010 should really be granted a different health and welfare benefit package for you to review and talk about. There are certainly a lot of other alternatives. We've suggested a few others here just to maybe start getting some dialogue going. But if current employees are within two years of the current board policy, the board can grandfather them into the current coverage plan. For example, if someone is at eight years of service as of June 30th, 2010, they would qualify for the fifty percent coverage upon life if you granted them that two years because they're so close to that timeframe. We can give you a projected thirty-year amortized cost upon request. Looking at that, Meg has been working with me on the numbers and we've been projecting out over thirty years, as did the report, the actuary report. Five staff members are not of retirement age but are in year eight as a management confidential employee. So you're dealing with five. For your information, at age sixty-five, the cost of lifetime coverage will decrease significantly due to Medicare A and B and the availability of lower-cost supplemental insurance plans offered to the district. Another consideration for anyone hired prior to July 1st, 2009, and has less than ten years but greater than five years in management, could be offered a one-time stipend amount determined by the board and district paid health insurance for a minimum of two years, up to a maximum of five years or until age sixty-five, whichever comes first, which is much like the previous certificated incentives offered by the district already over the last ten years. Currently, there are approximately fifteen employees who would qualify for this if you froze this category. Health insurance compensation can be determined at a later date pending negotiations and the financial stability of the district for those employees hired prior to 7/109 and who have less than five years in management. These are just a few examples and I'm certain that as you talk that you can come up with many more. And we could cost out the long-term effect of any of those suggestions so that you had enough information in order to make informed decision about this process. As identified in the actuary report, and I do have a copy of it with me and I don't know if you have all seen this, but it was identified that management currently has an $8,710,000 unfunded liability out of a district-wide liability of $14,698,000. If we don't do something to take a look at this and stop this now, it'll be potentially out of control.
As I recall, the actuarial study was actually presented at a board meeting in March, I believe.
Yes, it was. So Meg and I will be happy to answer any questions that you have about this report.
Board members? Everybody's going to jump in on this? Mr. Herron?
We've got to come up with a solution, that's for sure. We're going to need guidance from you and Meg as to what the various alternatives are. But, you know, I think we have to make this, to stop at June 30th, 2010 and have a new plan.
Mrs. Deacon?
I guess my thinking was along the same lines in terms of it would be hard for us to arrive at any dollar figures based on these alternative options. And so I think I'd rather work backwards a little bit and say, what's our target savings? I mean, you know, how much do we want of this unfunded liability to go away? I mean, all of it, maybe. I don't know if that's realistic. But at any rate, take a number like that and work backwards and then come up with some alternatives that allow us to make some decisions because without knowing costs associated with these different items, it's pretty hard to know where to start.
Well, we did actually do some of that. I'm not sure that we, you know, wanted to go ahead and put up a lot of numbers, but if you, you know, had specific questions, we might be able to throw out some things that we had done and Meg is prepared to maybe answer some of those.
Maybe if, there are four options listed here. Maybe if you could give us that information, Mrs. Cordero?
Well, yes, either we're going to do it now. I was going to suggest that if we didn't do it now, that we get it as a board brief item. Because I think we really need to know what the dollars are that are attached to this, to these various possibilities and how that's going to play out with this. Because the fourteen, sorry, the eight million plus in unfunded liability is going to continue. And so how are we, what are we doing? How will those other options affect that? Or, I mean, I'm looking at, we're really looking at stopping it from growing exponentially, right?
Yes.
So I guess I'd want to see how that, how much we can stop it with the various approaches.
And we played with those scenarios too, to look at, you know, I can't give you rock-solid numbers, but if we looked at saying, if we projected just going with option one of freezing it and currently grandfathering those who are in there, we're looking at what? About a four million-dollar savings over time?
The savings for the first scenario would be, the two-year grandfathering them in would be about a $6 million savings.
I'm sorry, so that was the first bullet or is that the plan?
First in the. That's actually not the very first bullet. That's the second, that's the bullet. If we just take the eight million that we think we're going to, you know, in the liability, stop it right now, not let anyone else join the club except for the two years. And then that would save us a ton of money. The, what really kills us here, obviously, are the health and welfare benefits. And basically, what we did was, again, I had to, we had to assume something. For the past, I think it's been for the past two years that they've gone up by fifteen percent. So I continued that out. That starts to look extremely ugly in thirty years. And that's what we're talking about. And we have very young, we have a lot of very young administrators.
Board members, can I ask for some direction on this? Would you like to get numbers associated with these four possibilities that are listed here for a brief and then have this come back for conference and action at successive board meetings in August? Is that reasonable? Then my second question is, this is part of Board Policy 4350, which has larger issues. Do we want to just deal with this one section or do we want to deal with 4350 holistically? All right.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Okay.
I'd like to see, since this is big dollars, I'd like to see this one first.
If it needs to be first. It could be that, how about if we leave it at if we, if we can only deal with this one section, if it's not ready, that we deal with this, but we plan to deal with this in August. Um, but preferably, we deal with the entire board policy. All right, we will do that then.
I have a question.
Yes, Dr. Noel?
What is the $14,698,698,000?
That's the rest of it, yeah. That's the unfunded liability for the rest of the retirees and the certificated and the classified.
Teachers and, I mean.
Teachers and classified.
Can I, can I just ask one more question? Have we looked at, at other, at formulas that other districts are using? We can't be the only districts that are in this dilemma.
I, I've only checked with a couple, and, um, I can continue to try to check with more as I am doing for one of the other areas under the board policy and see what other districts are doing. It's pretty much kinda all over the place, but they're all starting to pay attention to that, too.
Yeah, I'm sure they are.
Because they're gonna be facing the same issues. But I'll, I can see if I can get some more information on that as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, thank you, Dr. Robertson.
Thank you.
Item F4, Discussion of Board Policies 4119.23, 4219.23, 4319.23. Unauthorized Release of Confidential Privilege Information, then 4143 and 4243, um, Negotiations and Consultation. And then, the Board Bylaws 9006 Code of Ethics for School Board Members and 9011, Disclosure of Confidential Privilege Information. This is on the board for review and discussion, uh, sorry, on the board agenda for review and discussion because we had some issues that came up this spring. And I wanted board members to take a look at these, um, and see where things didn't seem clear, where they felt that there needed to be additions to, and to come forward with suggestions. We do have Mr. Price here as a resource, um, if we have questions about this. A, a lot of what we had issues with were around email and electronic mail, and the use of electronic mail. Um, and I wanna let you know that there is actually a new, uh, CSBA policy, Board Bylaw 9012, which is specifically on, uh, school boards and electronic communication. And there are some things that may target, uh, our concerns that can fit right into that, um, uh, template with some minor changes.
Where is that?
We don't have it because it's, it's not, it's not our board policy, and I just found out that, that it exists. And some boards this past spring have been starting to bring it forward. So, I will send that along in a board brief, um, for you to take a look at what Board Bylaw 90. Yes?
It would be very helpful to get a really, uh, good legal clarification, because we've been to workshops where we're told, uh, you know, our emails are public, and be aware of that when you write them, and things like that. And, uh, those are by lawyers, not by the CSBA. CSB has a lawyer, I understand, but.
Yes, yes.
And I, I'd like to, to, and I, as, as I think I've told you, I've got an opinion on some of these issues that you and I had, uh, from the California, uh, what do you call it, the First Amendment Coalition, CFA, and, uh, uh, to me, there's, to me, the law is pretty clear, but I'm a lawyer, and I think it would be very helpful to, uh, have that at the same time as we look at what the California School Board Association may be proposing.
For that in particular. Uh, but that's for future discussion. So, let's go ahead and talk about what we have here. Um, and first up, we have, uh, the unauthorized release of confidential privileged information. This is a board policy, uh, that we have had in place in our district since 2000. And you can see in the first paragraph that it refers to the governing board administration and staff. In later paragraphs, it refers to any employee. Now, administration and governing board and staff, we're all employees of the district, and we all actually do have personnel files. But, uh, one of my questions is, is that clear enough? Does the language need to change to be more specific that it includes board members? And do we want to add any language about consequences for board members that are perhaps? Because, uh, in the last paragraph, it says, depending on the circumstances, a superintendent or designee may deny the employee further access to any privileged information. And that is simply not going to work if it's a governing board member. So, any suggestions on these?
Well, I think that you.
Dr. Noel?
If you're gonna have consequences, then you better talk about a process, uh, about some, to afford some due process protection to people who are being accused of this, and, and a process to determine, uh, whether there was an unauthorized release, or the person who's accused of this can, can mount a defense. If we're talking about consequences, then, I think that kind of follows.
I suppose it would depend on what the consequences were.
Well, stigma, that's a consequence.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I just wanted to go back to the original question, or the first question that you raised, which was, does, are, is an employee a sufficient term? And I think not. I think we should continue to refer to the governing board administration and staff.
So, every place it says employee, except for maybe the third paragraph where it looks like it's a, it's a quote from government quote code 1098?
Yes, but I was, yes, actually, yes. So, but we, we'd have to reword it a little bit. Any member of the governing board administration or staff.
Mm-hmm.
Who willfully releases, et cetera, and in all of those places. But then, at the, at the, in the last paragraph where it says, any action by an employee, blah, 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 um, again, we would, I think, put the same thing in. I agree with you that the consequences, that there probably should be, I, I don't, there probably should be some consequences, otherwise, why would you adhere to the, to the policy? But I agree with you that you, we can't deny board members privileged information. So, I'm not sure what the consequence would be, other than maybe a public censure, or maybe not even a public censure, maybe just a private censure. Other than that, I don't know. Had you given any thought to?
The only thing that, the only thing that I've seen happen for school boards is where at a, at an open meeting, a board, boards have voted to censure, um, a governing board member based on their actions. And that, the ones that I've read about, it's been at, at open meetings where the board member had every opportunity to speak and to present, um, and it was simply a majority action. Other comments on this one?
Is this language from CSBA?
Yes, this is the CSBA template language. Dr. Noel?
I think, uh, the second line has the magic word in it. It refers to maintaining the confidentiality of all quote confidential records. And if you're gonna use that terminology, then I think you better define what a confidential record is. And that seems to me that leads one directly into the language of the California Public Records Act, which essentially says all records are public records unless they are specifically excluded by the act. And then, it has about that many paragraphs of exclusions, but they're quite specific. But the, but there's a legal, I'm always afraid to say these things in Mr. Price's presence because he knows, but, uh, my understanding is that there's a legal presumption that the records are public until the exception is cited. And, uh, I think that needs to be made clear. And also, uh, in another context, I think it's in the ed code, or maybe the government code, uh, it, it gives a definition of a, of confidential, but that's in the context of closed session. But something is, is only confidential if it is, uh, in that context, if it is, uh, related to a legally permissible conversation or, uh, within closed session. So, that, the law is fairly clear there, and this is not clear as to what is or is not a public.
And maybe I'll ask Mr. Price really quickly, because it refers to, the second sentence refers to information and records pertaining to closed sessions, negotiations, student records are not subject to public disclosure under government code 6252-6260. Is that the public records, uh, code number?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so if people see this, and certainly, uh, you can, you can go to this and read it and see what the list is. And if we ever got to the point where we were taking action against any employee or against, uh, including a governing board member, um, then I would expect the employee or the governing board member to pull that list out and to point out that this was not an exception.
By that logic, Mrs. Parker, you don't need any of this, because if it's all in the Public Records Act, we don't need to say it. That act covers us all at all times in any event. So, I, I, I'm not saying don't, I'm not saying erase it all. I'm saying that, that doesn't preclude, uh, the need in this context to talk about what is, is properly confidential. I mean, this is, this is an endemic problem in government at all levels. Governments tend to make too much confidential, uh, way beyond, uh, an expansive notion of what is truly confidential. I think, uh, we need to address it, make, make ourselves very clear if we're gonna have, uh, ultimately sanctions for people who, uh, some people think are violating confidentiality.
I, I actually, I, I don't think it would be very helpful to have a huge, long list, but maybe others do.
I didn't say a long list, a definition that, certainly, it's something that states about the fundamental presumption of the Public Records Act. And that's right at the top of the Public Records Act.
Mrs. Cordero?
Yeah, um, you know, I, I just wanna keep, I have to keep reminding myself that we're dealing with a board policy on a particular topic, and so, typically, when we do that, there may be other issues that are relevant to that topic, but we often don't include them in the board policy about that. Um, we may make reference, like we do here, to particular state or, you know, state government codes or, or the ed code, um, but we often don't, we often use those codes as the direction to anybody who's reading this, as to where to look for the justification for, for what the, the policy is. So, I, I tend, I think I agree with you that including a lot of additional information that's not particularly what the policy is, but rather giving definitions of other codes that exist, maybe, I, I think is, is unnecessary and kind of not in keeping with how we normally write board policy. So, I would, I would prefer not to include a lot of that information here, um, because it repeatedly makes reference to various different government codes. The other thing that I keep having to remind myself is, we're also gonna be looking at the Code of Ethics. And there's a distinction between what is illegal and what is unethical.
Or against board policy.
Or against board policy.
As opposed to against the board ethics.
As opposed to what's unethical. And so, something could be perfectly legal and still be an unethical behavior. Um, I'm looking at, I was just looking at one of the, you know, one of the things that is unethical, or that, one of the things that we have in our ethics is, um, where it says, attend all regularly scheduled board meetings. Well, obviously, it's not illegal to miss a board meeting, but it might be unethical to miss a whole bunch of them. So, I think we're, we have to keep in mind that there's gonna be these two different policies that deal with things that violate some code, um, some, some like government code, um, versus things that just violate what we would consider an ethical behavior for, for a member of the board, or administration or staff.
Dr. Noel?
I would think that a policy on, as it's called, the unauthorized release of confidential slash privileged information would have to encompass the governing legal norms. And, uh, and I'm not talking about details, I'm talking about the fundamental principle that everything is public unless it is specifically excluded. And that, just that sentence. And then, and then if you wish, just cite specifically excluded by, put down the statute numbers. But that principle is a terribly important principle for, for a public institution and a, in a democracy.
Mr. Herron or Mrs. Deacon, any comments?
I don't think you want mine. To spend this much time on this issue and what we have in front of us, when I was running for office, and I sat through some of the meetings, there was just hours spent on this kinda stuff. It just drove me crazy. If there's a change that somebody wants, put it in writing, get us in front of us, and let's vote it up or down. But, um, I just can't see the time spent on this.
Mrs. Deacon?
I guess, um, regarding the issue of sanctions, I mean, if, if we're going to specify that something is a breach, um, and in this policy, there is no mechanism to identify that if it's a board member, maybe it's appropriate to add some language to that effect. Regarding the first paragraph, I'm not sure if this is the place to go beyond what's already here. I mean, I, I think that this, I understand what Dr. Noel is saying, but I, I'm not sure that that's really pertinent. Well, okay, it's pertinent, but it is not necessarily, um, the specific direction that this particular policy is regarding. So, you know, I hesitate to go beyond information that basically just, I mean, it says right here, information records pertaining to closed sessions, negotiations, and student records are not subject to public disclosure. I mean, those are the three categories. We know that, that where confidentiality, um, kind of reigns is keying, and, and the code is there. So, I'm not sure we need to go beyond that.
All right, well, um, I, I would like to take a look at the other policies as well. We have some language from Mrs. Cordero. Any suggestions on sanctions for governing board members?
Um, the only thing I think, which the boards already have the right to do, is to censure board members, since I would say, um, denying access is appropriate for all the, for all the other, uh, categories. Of course, the, if it were the superintendent who were violating the policy, then again, there, that might have to be something that would be addressed differently as well, because it would be difficult, at best, to deny the superintendent access to information. So, I think we might have to consider what would be the, you know, what would be the sanction for a superintendent, what would be the sanction for a member of the board. I think for the member of the board, really, the only thing I would recommend is just censure. I don't think we can do more than that.
So, inserting language about that?
Yeah. For a member, for the superintendent, um, I don't know, I, it could be censure, could be up to, uh, you know, letter, a disciplinary letter. I don't know if you give superintendents disciplinary letters, but.
I think you certainly could.
You know, it could be something a little bit more formal, but that would be, that, that would be all I would recommend.
Okay. Now, I included 4143/4243 simply as a, uh, board reference for what negotiations are. Dr. Noel?
I, I'll go back on this first one. Did we decide that it must be an employee versus a board member? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
What the suggested language.
The last paragraph talks about an employee.
Right.
Okay, does that apply to board members?
Yes, except for the, the issue where it, um, it says, the superintendent or designee may deny the employee further access to any privileged information, which, which can't apply to governing board members. It would not, uh, it just does not function.
You're saying that the superintendent can't deny an elected governor access to privileged information?
Mr. Price, I'm assuming that that is true?
Well, what is true in even a broader sense is that the issue of. Well, what is true in even a broader sense is that the issue of dis, is circumscribed by what is allowable under state law. And under state law, there is no provision that would allow for any sort of discipline, if you will, that would be applicable to board members. So for example, in the Brown Act, as you will turn to presumably in a minute, under your board policy 9011, where it talks about disclosure of closed session information, the Brown Act provides that if that occurs by reason of an action of an employee, there can be discipline. But there's no parallel provision that allows for any discipline for a board member. Instead, there's an opportunity to seek a court injunction. There's an opportunity to report it to the district attorney's office if, if the district or the board, balance of the board wished to. But there's no such thing as discipline of a board member. However, it's come to be recognized that the free speech rights of other board members allow for a vote of censure to be taken. There are at least some districts, I saw one in a court of appeal decision, that has a whole procedure that allows for censure, which quite frankly, in the big picture, may not be worth grappling with, because as a matter of your own free speech rights, any of you, you know, can vote to say, I disapprove of what board member Y did or did not. And in those districts that have gone so far, and one in particular, to develop such a policy calling for censure, it is, I believe, taken an inordinate amount of time. And then once it's in place, there's been controversy, there's been litigation with accompanying expenditure of district resources in an unproductive sort of way. So I think this first section that you're talking about is really, except for the first paragraph, largely dealing with the punishment, whereas the board policy or board bylaw 9011 really defines the crime, if you will. And you really need to, if you're going to go any further with this, be talking and thinking about, well, what is confidential information? It means one thing for the Brown Act, it means another thing for the Public Records Act. But it, in terms of the Public Records Act, it does not necessarily follow that because something is exempt from disclosure, that there's anything wrong with disclosing it. You can go beyond what is required by the Public Records Act. So to delve into that arena, you'd have to spend time focusing on, well, do we really want to make it a matter of discipline? If anything, if anyone goes one iota beyond what's absolutely allowed to be exempt by the Public Records Act? I don't know. But in any event, that would only apply to employees, not board members. So it just seems to me that as a board, you need to focus on where you, where, if at all, you want to go with this. If, if you're concerned about potential issues of employee abuse, either of closed session discussion or other types of confidential releases, student records, then that ought to be focused on. But to try and do this whole thing globally, I think, does present the potential for spending a lot of time circling around.
Well, what about changing the language to make a paragraph, parallel, going back to 4119.23? In terms of governing board admin and staff, would you then recommend that we just leave off language about consequences for governing board members, with the governing board members knowing that they can always have a free speech right to censure or publicly disapprove of board members through a simple motion? Of board member action, I should say, through a simple motion?
I want to be sure that I understand your question, I'm sorry. But as I read the current board policy, there is no provision that would call for there to be any discipline or adverse consequences for board members.
Right.
And as such, I don't see that there is any need to modify that, as there is no provision in state law that would allow for same, except as we discussed, censure.
Okay.
Leave it alone, yes.
So, so don't put the censure in there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So moving on, 4143, 4243 was simply in there as a refresher on negotiations and consultations, what those mean. And then we're on to 9006, Code of Ethics, and 9011, which was also sort of a, a refresher on confidential privileged information. So with 9006, this is a Code of Ethics. And there may be a number of things that board members think need to be added or deleted from the Code of Ethics. Obviously, it was electronic mail that was issued this past spring. And I don't know if board members have suggestions around language for ethics as a, and communication. Mr. Herron?
Do we know if the National School Boards Association has updated this in the last 10 years?
They have not. Dr. Noel?
I usually like the National School Boards Association's stuff better than the California School Boards Association's stuff. But some of this stuff is just nonsense. To call this something in a Code of Ethics, that I, that attend all regularly scheduled meetings insofar as possible? That's not an ethical issue. At least not since, not as I understand ethics. I see some of these have a more ethical tone, render all decisions based on the available facts. Yeah, that certainly talks about a norm of not acting out of prejudice or, or anything of that kind. But if, if there's a Code of Ethics in this set, it's a subset, and could be distilled out into something that sounds like ethical precepts. That's all.
Any other board members? Mrs. Cordero?
Well, there, first of all, I actually think attending regularly scheduled board meetings is an ethical obligation that we have. We take an oath of office and we are elected, so I think we do have an ethical responsibility to those people who voted for us. But I, there are some that I think don't belong here. I think although it's a nice sentiment, encourage the free expression of opinion by all board members, and seek systematic communications between board and students, staff, and all elements of the community is really, I don't see that as an issue of ethics. I do think maintaining the confidentiality of members of the public who communicate with us is an ethical issue. And that's not listed here. And that particularly as it applies to electronic mail, since it's so easy to forward that. And there is sort of accepted what's called netiquette, email etiquette, that you don't forward somebody's message without their permission. That that's kind of a standard ethics in the use of the internet. So I would like to see that included, something along those lines included. I could eliminate the encouraged free expression. I don't know, I think I would probably keep the rest of them.
Mrs. Deacon?
This is something that I think would be, we'd be better off spending some time with, maybe outside of this setting and then bringing back, because I, I'm not really comfortable doing this on the fly, and I, you know, I'd like to spend some time thinking about it. So maybe we could come back with some recommendations.
Is this something that a couple of board members want to work on together? Or is this something that we all want to work on individually and come back with suggestions that? Yes, Mrs. Cordero?
I personally don't think this one is one that individual board members should work on separately. I think it should be something that we tackle all together, because I, I anticipate that there would be so much, there wouldn't be a huge amount of consensus. I mean, I think we'll all have things that we think should be added, all have things that we think should not be there. And I could just see spending a lot of time drafting something and then spending just as much time going over the draft as we would if we just started here.
I just want Mr. Price to, to jump in on something there, and that was the, it, it's difficult to word it for a Code of Ethics in terms of confidentiality with communication with members of the public, because most communication is subject to the Public Records Act. And so finding the right wording for that, that the Code of Ethics is that you'll have a certain standard of releasing information, but knowing that anything may be subject to the Public Records Act, do you have any thoughts on that, Mr. Price?
I do. The way I'm looking at it, I'm not sure if it's an issue per se, or if it's more of a practical issue. But under the last bullet point in the Code of Ethics now, it talks about respecting the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law. Well, I mean, I think that's pretty much a no-brainer. If I'm understanding the discussion from Ms. Cordero, the issue perhaps being raised is broader than protecting information that is protected as a matter of law. And you are additionally focusing on board member email communications, which may in many cases have no legal protection per se. And the question in that kind of an instance would be whether it ought to be shared outside of the original communication from a staff member, the superintendent, or one board member to another in instances where such a, a sharing would not violate the law per se. And I don't know that, you know, I'm not aware that there's any, you know, kind of a standard, a Code of Ethics, a Ten Commandments, that you do or you do not do that kind of thing. But I would point out that there is a, a practical ramification, I think, that may be involved when that information is shared. And that is that the information may lo, no longer be forthcoming. Because if whoever is propagating or, or developing the information has no understanding that the information is going to be maintained confidential, whether or not it might be the subject of a Public Record Act request, I would believe that that might prompt the person who would be, for example, informing the board, not to so inform the board, if whatever he says is going to be relayed outside of the email communications that are intended only for board members. Now, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but if and to the extent board members expect to be kept in contact with regarding significant developments in between board meetings, when there's no opportunity for a, an appropriate closed session, then there's that ramification. So it's really something, in order for it to, to make any sense, board members have to agree that they're going to generally, you know, adhere to a certain principle, call it a Code of Ethics or call it something else. Because if not, then that may have the impact of limiting the communication of information to all board members in between meetings.
Mrs. Deacon?
You raise an interesting point about a chilling effect that might occur if members of the public perceived that what they thought were confidential emails or expressions of opinion to a board member suddenly became shared. I actually printed something out, I know we've seen some of this information maybe before, but I don't know about other folks, but I've been getting a lot of emails with disclaimers at the bottom recently that say something like, "This email message, including any attachments, is for the sole use of the intended recipients and may contain confidential and privileged information. Any unauthorized review, use, disclosure, or distribution is prohibited and may be unlawful." I don't expect that we, that the unlawful part would really apply. As far as we're concerned, this may be a lot of HIPAA, you know, health stuff that's coming through with these. But it seems to me that we could potentially at least put on our website, where our own email addresses are listed, a notation to members of the public, that if they want something to remain confidential and not be forwarded, that they could cut and paste, you know, a disclosure statement into their email, so that when we receive them, we would know that that was their desire. It wouldn't get to everybody, because a lot of people may not go there to get our email addresses, but it might be a way, at least to put people on notice, that they, they could ask for it to remain confidential.
All right, I want to wrap this up in just two minutes, so I'll let you two have a minute each. What I'm, what I'm hoping is that we will look more in depth at 9006 in particular. Mr. Price, you know, his point is very relevant. It's the wording of, of how we put this in place that's, I, I think, really challenging. So two quick points, Dr. Noel?
I think that the conversation can only stay at a general level like this so long, and then it has to get down to specifics. The, the issue between, that you raised, that I disagreed with you about, had to do with an email sent by a former board member to the whole board, not labeled confidential, no request to keep it confidential. And somehow that became, that fell into the hands of somebody else. And you raised the question that that was unethical behavior. When I look at that specific, I, I have a hard time seeing it. Now, I looked at the content of that email, and in fact, that email contained a criticism of members of the public. So here's a, here's a political message coming to the board as a whole that somehow gets sent to the people who are the subject of the criticism. To me, that's, the ethical imperative, if, if it exists at all, existed in sending it rather than in suppressing it.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I have, I have two comments, and I'll make the first one first. I mean, I'll make, well, never mind. Oh, I shouldn't say I disagree, but I, I'm concerned about having members of the public have to identify that information that they send to us should not be pub, just sort of randomly shared with anyone we want to share it to, or share it with, I should say. When, you know, at, at, in high school, in our high schools, in our colleges, in our universities, we teach students that that's part of the, the responsibility of using electronic media, is that you have a social responsibility within a social network. And what, and to me, it feels like we're, we're telling the public that they cannot trust us to be responsible, ethical, elected officials, that if they send us something, we can't, that they can't trust us to treat it with the same respect and integrity that we expect students to treat information with. You know, certainly I don't object to putting that information there. I, but I object to the notion that if they don't put it on there, that we have the, that we should take carte blanche to share it with, with anyone. And I, I also have to take exception, Dr. Noel, because you have stated, at least in a number of board meetings, that there have been many times when you have stated that you have received emails and/or letters regarding actions that the rest of us have taken, meaning you, that if, if I take you at your word, that that really occurred, it meant you received correspondence that did make criticisms of other people, and you never felt compelled to share those emails with us. So it seems disingenuous to suggest that because this was a criticism of somebody else, you felt morally compelled to share it. The person who was writing to us.
I don't think he said that.
Okay, that, that may be true. If I'm wrong, then, then I apologize.
Nor did I do what you just attributed. And if you're going to make that accusation, I would ask you to at least present something, some record of what you are saying I said.
And let's not get off topic, because we're on 906.
And as long as I, as long as I have a moment to re, to rejoin, I'd also like to point out that we teach our kids in high school about the Constitution of the United States and the First Amendment.
Dr. Noel, you're out of order, let Mrs. Cordero finish her comment.
I apologize, Madam President, for being out of order.
Okay, so at, at the very least, I think we should, we should be able, the public should be able to expect that we are going to be ethical, honest, decent, standard bearers of, of, of expectations that. that are pretty common among users of electronic media. And if they can't trust us to do that much, I don't know why they would be... Feel compelled to share information with us.
All right. Well, let's think about that for 9006.
I'd like to see that email, 9012.
Yes, absolutely. I will get that to you.
If Mr. Price can create some wording that Dr. Sarvis could attach to his emails when he wants to talk to us confidentially, I'd love to see that, because I don't want to stifle Dr. Sarvis from talking to us in between meetings, but if there was wording that would make it very clear that the things he thinks are confidential versus the things that maybe aren't confidential.
Sure, I can easily do that. In fact, he can copy the one that's at the bottom of every email message that I send, or that doesn't necessarily have any impact if the subject matter of an email is not itself confidential in terms of it being protected under the law. You're not talking about something that's legal. You're talking about something that requires board members to agree upon as to what the standard is, what the Emily Post standard is that ought to apply, and in the absence of any agreement, then there isn't going to be much that's going to be accomplished, frankly.
Well, it can't be in every single email Dr. Sarvis sends out that makes it moot.
Mr. Herron, I can put it right in the title, and it'll end up being forwarded. I can mark it confidential. It can be an update on negotiations, and I've had it forwarded. So, you know, putting it at the end or putting it at the beginning, it's a big problem. In fact, in one particular instance, I had other board members then say, "Please don't send us anything else. I mean, if we can't keep this information confidential, then don't send us any information."
All right. Well, all board members have had the opportunity to speak. We are over time. Maybe this can come back to us in August, when we have our board, our special board workshop, which will probably be towards the end of August. In the meantime, we do need to go back to consent items designated for discussion. And the first one is item D6, approval of memorandum of understanding between the Santa Barbara School Districts and the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse for the Youth Service Program on the secondary school campuses for the 2009-10 school year.
Talks about a total of $125,000 funding source, gives three funding sources, one of which is a pupil retention block grant, and the other, the top, and that, of course, we know is subject to tier three flexibility, and yet, two lines above says that there's no impact on the unrestricted general fund. And I think that's a combination of terms, number one. And number two, I'd like to know how much of it is from the pupil retention block grant, which money which could be used.
The answer to that is that we're using some carryover funds for the... From the pupil retention block grant, and we're not... We're trying to be sensitive to that 30% reduction, the flexibility piece. I sat down with Meg Jete the other day to try to piece this together. Council on Drug and Alcohol Abuse knows that this is one of those programs that we feel very strongly about, and that we're trying to maintain, but it's one of the most difficult. They're trying to find money. We've pretty much told them this is the last year, that we will have any kind of funding to go forward. So, we're using carryover money from both of those sources, Title IV as well. We're basically piecing every penny together that we can to make this work this year.
I understand. Just having gone through the budget process and having looked for trade-offs, I think it would have been very helpful had we understood that there was some money there that might have been used for something else, and that the board could have decided about that priority.
I understand what you're saying. I would say all but maybe just a few dollars was money that was in the part that is categorical, that we had the discretion... We could not have spent that on teachers, in other words. We couldn't have spent it on many things that were cut. It was specific to this type of... This is a very appropriate funding source for this type of activity. So, it couldn't have been used for very many other things. I understand what you're saying.
Well, do you understand that?
Yes, I do.
That last sentence expressed a value judgment that I don't share.
I'm talking about compliance.
And what I'm saying is, what I'm saying, Swawsky, is that there are value judgments built into this, some of which really ought to come to the board. We're the ones, to beg a phrase... Borrow a phrase from President Bush, we're the value deciders.
I understand that.
Thank you.
When you say...
Mr. Herron?
When you say "carryover," didn't we sweep all the balances out?
We have them holding, and we're... In fact, I'm not sure. I mean, we know what our fund balance is at this point. Maybe Mr. Jete can speak to that better than I can.
We will not know our ending fund balance in any categorical until we have posted all our APs and our ARs. So, we can't give you a number until we know what needs to be posted for the final eight, nine.
So, once it's posted, and if there's a balance, that balance will be swept?
That's what our plan is.
And so, is there an effort going on to spend that money now, before we get to that point?
No, there... I don't want to spend the money. They have to... They have to work pretty hard for it to come out of that office.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
Is there a motion on this? Move to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye abstain.
Okay. Carries with four, zero with one abstention, which moves with the majority vote. We will skip ahead to item D24, since we do have people here on that particular item, and we'll come back to the other items on the consent calendar, consent agenda. This is rescission of contract award to lack construction for portable classroom relocation at Washington Elementary School. Mr. Hetjank? You just kind of stand up there, and two pulled this one. It was Mrs. Deacon. What would you like to ask?
Actually, it is a fairly benign question, although based on the public comment we had earlier, I think maybe some more clarification about some of the bond issues might be useful.
Be happy to provide that. After the board did not award a contract due to a lack of funding source, we found a funding source and met with the superintendent and legal counsel to figure out how we could get this project started. Legal counsel advised us that we could award the contract to the low bidder. However, the contract would have to be modified, because not all the conditions could be met, mainly the timelines. So, prior to recommending award of the contract to you, we met with Mr. Lack and his team. We discussed the work that we thought could get done under Phase One, that was indicated as Phase One in the board agenda items, and a Phase One due date, with the remainder of the project being a Phase Two completed at the Phase Two due date. We had discussions about what increased or decreased costs may be associated with that, and based on that information, and that award, and that agreement, we made a recommendation to this board that you award that contract. The idea was to get the project started with a minimum disruption to the school, and to get the project rolling. I mean, the Washington School was disappointed that we lost our funding source, rightfully so, and I think everybody, including myself and everybody up on the dais, wants that project started. We agreed to some timelines as part of that, and timelines of getting some information into the district. Mr. Lack asked for some extra time above the standard 10 days in the contract to get his bonds in, and because of the fact that he did not have a bid bond which tied an insurance company to give him the performance and payment bonds, it was only fair to give him some of that time. There's been numerous days where we've been told we'd be getting the bonds, up to and including the letter referenced by Mr. Herron. The letter is dated July 7th, stating that the bonds would be issued on July 8th. Neither my office nor the planning office has seen these bonds yet. That was the reason, because we hadn't seen the bonds, to include this letter in the agenda item, as a... First of all, it wasn't included because it wasn't in my possession by the time of the agenda due date. It wasn't included as an extra attachment today, because it would have kind of given the board the impression that the bonds were received on July 8th, and they were not. The cost to rebid the project, I'm not going to comment on Mr. Lack's cost. I have no knowledge of those, but he mentioned... He threw out a figure on what it would cost the district to rebid the project, and I want to let you know that that figure is probably tenfold more than it would cost the district. And I say that with a condition. When I stick about cost to the district, I'm talking about actual expenditures, money that we spend on paying somebody, not district employee time. So, I'm not going to attempt to put a value on district employee time spent, you know, trying to get the project going, or what district employee time was spent in rebidding the project. But the actual cost would be paying the architect to modify the contract documents to reflect new dates, new milestones, and the cost of advertising that project. The project Phase One included doing the access to the library and two classrooms as part of the work. And I need to say that the work agreed to in Phase One is extensive. When we agreed to the work, it was a pretty tight timeline, and if we award this contract now, and we expect this Phase One work to be done and have access to these classrooms, I don't have confidence that's going to happen. I think we may have a situation where we don't have access to every classroom come the start of school, and everybody's going to be looking at me, saying, "What are we supposed to put these kids?" And I won't have a good answer for the principal. In the email to Mr. Lack, I said, basically, this is what I'm going to recommend to the board, and this is why, in order for me to change my recommendation, or to consider changing my recommendation, I would need to have three things happen. Number one would be the clearing up of the letter from the bank, which has happened, which you have a copy of, that I received midday today via email. Another was to have the bonds in hand with time to verify that they met the contract documents. We've received no bonds to this date. The third thing that I asked for was a realistic schedule showing how the Phase One work could still be accomplished in a shortened timeline, which is over a month less than what we originally thought it would take to do the work. I haven't received a realistic schedule. I don't believe that the Phase One work can be physically accomplished, working within the timeframes allowed of 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, for making construction noise. I don't see how it's going to happen. I think we're setting ourselves up for failure, for liquidated damages, for false expectations, and I don't think that's in the best interest of the district. Unfortunately, I need to make a recommendation that I think is in the best interest of the district, and I wish that was also in the best interest of Mr. Lack, but per his comments, it's probably not in his best interest. I mean, that's pretty evident. It would mean rescinding an award. But to pay, the way we set it up, it was a good deal, I thought, for the district to be able to get this project started, get this work done before school started in the fall, and have that part of the project completed. I don't see how that can happen. And that was the whole basis for awarding the contract, instead of going out to bid and rebid the project. So, what I'm giving you is my best recommendation of what I think is in the best interest of the school district, and I do want to say that when we receive schedules, we never approve a schedule. We review it, we make comments, but we don't approve a schedule, because once we approve a schedule, that means we're directing the contractor to finish by a certain time, and then the contractor has every right to expect even more money via another change order. A contractor has every right to be late and pay the liquidated damages. And if you want to direct a contractor not to be late and not to pay liquidated damages, you need to be prepared to pay additional money.
That was very thorough. Thank you, Mr. Hetjank. Mrs. Cordero and...
Yeah.
No. Okay.
Well, I just wanted to follow up on two things.
I'm not... Please, I'm up here making this recommendation, and I wish I didn't have to do it.
Well, it's a recommendation I make as well. We didn't have the bond funds in place. It's been over a month.
So, two questions. Does this mean...
Sorry.
We're off by a year, then? It's next summer, the beginning of next summer that we would start?
No, we would start construction as originally planned during the school year, but one year later than we originally intended. In other words, we would rebid the job to start prior to the end of the school year, ending at the end of summer. So, we will still be disturbing the school, but we'll be disturbing them later on in the school year.
I'm sorry. So, you're talking... I thought you just said June. It would be June of next year, then, that they would start?
No, no, no. It would be during the school year. I'd have to go back and look at the original dates of the original contract, but I believe they started shortly after the first of the year, getting things ready, getting their bonds in place, whether it be January, February, March, whatever. But the architect and the project manager took the date they wanted to job to finish, and you back up from there to see how much you can get done while students are not there. Then you back up from there to see how much you can get while students are there, and then you back up the time for advertising the project, awarding the contract, getting all the paperwork in, and from there, you get your advertising date, and that kind of sets the date that you set the ball in motion.
And what about the money we borrowed to do this? We're paying interest on it, even though we're not using it?
I don't know that if we're paying interest and receiving interest of both, I'd have to refer to...
We have not received any money as of yet.
It's on the way, but it's not in the bank.
It's on the way. So, we will have it.
Yes, it's been... All the paperwork is finished.
Thank you.
Any other board comments? Mr. Herron?
I'm going to withdraw from the conversation. I had a conversation with Mr. Price a while back on this issue, and since Mr. Lack's supporting my campaign, I'm going to not get involved in the discussion.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I just... I feel like I'm... Like, there's not really much of a choice that I have to make, because not knowing intimately what went on firsthand, I feel obligated to rely on our staff, who have that daily interaction with the... With Mr. Lack, as well as with the situation on the school site, and the more detailed knowledge of the process. So, I feel that if Mr. Hetjank is suggesting that he does not feel confident that going ahead with this contract would be in the best interest of the district, that that's something that we should take... And if our superintendent concurs, that, to me, seems like something we should take very seriously, because I can only imagine, if in fact, things didn't work out, the public outcry there would be if we sort of overlooked our own staff's recommendation, and then, in fact, ended up in a serious difficulty. So, I'm willing to support this.
What communication are you having with the Washington principal about this?
I... He is aware of the fact that the project has not started, and why it has not started, and I intend to have communication with him tomorrow, based on board decision tonight.
And then that would be further...
We have further publication with the site and with their parents and the community about what the timelines were. Mr. Price and I are having conversations with the city on the one portable in question.
And you have not received any written information about why you didn't get a bond or evidence of a bond, even though this letter states July 8th?
No, I haven't. We've been given numerous dates of when Mr. Lack thought the bonds would be forthcoming, and unfortunately, they weren't forthcoming, and if he wants to say anything, I'd be glad to...
Would you like to have him come up?
And I will say, on the contractor's behalf, because he did not have a bid bond in place, as I explained in my memorandum, that that means that the bonding companies are not obligated to... are not obligated to issue him the performance bonds and the payment bonds that they would have had that bid bond in place. And so consequently, the, part of the time in, in, in obtaining these bonds is the fact that they're probably, and I don't know this for a fact, they're probably asking an arm and a leg of Mr. Lack in order to bond him because they don't have that obligation. That, that's my feeling, but I hate to speak for Mr. Lack or, or the money he spent because I don't have firsthand knowledge of that.
With board member permission, may we have Mr. Lack come up and just address this one point? Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not sure which point you want me to discuss, but...
The, the bond, why it is that we have a letter here that says that you will have a bond in place by Wednesday, July 8th?
Because the bonding company will issue the bond. It costs more money once they issue the bond. And once this thing came up with the bank, which they stepped out of bounds, which is the same bank that put the municipal financing together for you for this deal. You have to remember that you awarded me this contract last fall, but during the school year. It was originally going to get done during the school year. I apologize for the disrupt of the bank, but you know, I think there's a big circle around all this stuff that the, I'm, you know, I'm not at fault here and I'm trying to just build this, build this thing for your school and I have never not finished a building on time. I've never had a liquidated damage. We originally going to start this project during the school year. It will get done in a calendar year. And I know it'll cost you more money. The money is already there. You know, the people are in place to do it. The bonding letter is there. It costs me $200,000 to get that bond in place where normally I'd get them just like this. It's not, it, you know, there's financial difficulties out there in this community and every contractor is feeling it. They, if they're telling you they're not, they're lying. But I can just tell you, I had to go borrow off a piece of property to get $200,000 for this bond, for this deal, and I have already spent the money doing it. And if I don't exercise this, I'll lose another $200,000.
But you don't actually have the bond?
They will issue it. The letter states right there that the company will issue it. They have my money. They'll issue it as soon as I, I mean, it's a process thing. And they're right, the letter says it right there. They're going to issue it.
When?
As soon as I give them the okay. This whole thing got interrupted right now, just recently, the last couple of days. And you see the retractions from the bank because they're trying, it was in the newspaper today, they're trying to sell that bank. And they're trying to pull people down in this community with it. And it's really kind of sad and I hate standing up here and it's embarrassing to me, but this is costing me a lot of money. And we have ramped up twice for this project. And we're ready to start it. I have my schedule, my project manager here. We're ready to go on it. So, I mean, I don't know what else I can say except for the fact that we were going to start this thing. It would've been nice to really get it going while these kids were on his class, but they're going to have to be there anyways. Originally, that was the way the deal was, is that the kids would be there. And I can guarantee you, we'll get the thing done in a calendar year. And we'll work around the children, nobody get hurt. I just finished the Ellis Goryell project where three stories, a $14 million deal, and I didn't get one person hurt. And we were sawing concretes three stories high and people were playing tennis, going to the beach and all that kind of stuff. Not, not one, I've never had a claim, never had an insurance claim.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Hetjank, if you want to come back up again. I guess that my question to you is if, if the recommendation is to rescind this, is there any point or benefit to doing a rescen- a rescension based on a timeline if, for example, if this bond does not come forward within the next five days? Or is that...
Well, the, the first thing we'd have to do is, because I've not seen the schedule I asked for, but, but I don't believe that, that we can still accomplish the Phase One work that we agreed to by the beginning of school. So if you don't rescind the contract, then I'm going to have to come back to you at the next board meeting to give you information as to what the new timelines are and what the new negotiations are. Because we'd have to go back and negotiate that initial change order with the contractor because those terms can no longer be met. In my opinion, it's a physical impossibility to accomplish that work in that timeline. And so now we're, we're base, we're backed up against the wall to the next board meeting before we could even start. And that is if we could agree on the new conditions because the conditions that we agreed upon seven weeks ago that we thought would be starting two weeks later have not taken place.
Board members, any further questions on this one? Or comments? Well, we need a motion one way or the other.
Well, I guess we're not going to all jump in at this one, so I'll, I'll do it. Given all the information that we have, our staff, our staff is still making this recommendation. As I said previously, we rely on our staff and we respect their expertise. I feel obligated to acknowledge that Mr. Hetjank certainly has more expertise in this area than I do. And if it's his feeling that this is the appropriate step to take, then I will recommend, I will move that we rescind the contract award to lack construction for portable classroom relocation at Washington Elementary School.
Is there a second? I will second it. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Abstention?
Abstention.
The motion carries with a, with two abstentions which move with the majority of two and one no.
About abstentions, abstentions, Madam President?
Abstentions are not a non-vote. They are, and they're not a true recusal. They are simply, maybe Mr. Price can express it more eloquently than I, but there's, they, they move, they carry with the majority of the, of the, of the vote, whether it's no or yes.
What was the vote again?
It was two ayes, one no, and two abstentions.
It was...
How do you get a majority that the abstentions carry with them?
Out of board policy, board policy language has the abstentions move with the majority vote.
Whether that's an aye or a no.
Yes.
Mr. Heron?
It's in the policy we agreed to.
Is, is my abstention the same as Bob's abstention?
Well, maybe Mr. Price can, we don't have a recusal policy.
I don't hear a majority for the abstention to go to.
Excuse me, there were two votes in favor of the motion, one opposed, and there were two abstentions. Mr. Heron's abstention, although he didn't recuse himself, was based upon a contact. And even without counting that abstention with the majority, Dr. Noel's abstention is cast with the majority by operation of the board policies and by operation of Robert's rules, which you have incorporated into the policy. And that's, in terms of the parliamentary procedure, well-established parliamentary procedure.
Mr. Heron?
I didn't use the word reclusive, but I thought I made it clear why I was doing it. Isn't that the same thing or did I just not use the right word?
No, but my point is without even having to wade into whether you recused yourself or not, Dr. Noel's abstention in and of itself results in the motion passing because Dr. Noel's vote is viewed as being joined with the two affirmative votes under your board rules and parliamentary procedure.
I understand all that totally. I just wanted the record to be clear on why I voted or why I did what I did.
Yes, and the only reason I'm making that comment, Mr. Heron, is because where someone recuses or abstains based upon a conflict or some other recusal basis, then their vote is not deemed to be joined with the majority. Thank you, sir.
How would the minutes reflect what I did?
The minutes would reflect that there was a three to one to one vote. And the minutes should reflect you as abstaining based upon a recusal.
You mean the minutes won't reflect that I abstained?
We always reflect, the minutes do reflect normally the bid abstentions.
No, I, I'm sorry. Just without pounding on this, they will reflect the actual votes of the board members, including the two abstentions. And the fact that with Dr. Noel's abstention added to the two affirmative votes, the motion passes.
All right, okay.
Do you remember Heron recorded as recusing himself?
Abstention due to recusal, because we actually don't have any right of recusal in our board policy.
That's correct.
All right. We now move on to item D11, approval of memorandum of understanding between the Santa Barbara High School District and the Santa Barbara County Education Office for Program Improvement External Provider Services. Mrs.?
I, I pulled 11 and 12, but this supplementary information satisfies me.
You, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I move to adopt 11 and 12.
11 and 12?
And 12.
I'll, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. D11 and D12. D12 is the approval of the memorandums of understanding between the Santa Barbara School Districts and the Santa Barbara County Ed Office regarding AmeriCorps personnel at listed schools. That passes 5-0. D15, approval of new job descriptions for Santa Barbara School District's school psychologists and school nurses.
That was I again. I had a couple of questions about this. This is, this is really to approve new job descriptions for school psychologists and school nurses. And as I understand the text here, it is because of the recommendations from the FICMAT in the preliminary report. And I'm, I'm troubled that this particular little piece of the FICMAT report is receiving immediate attention while we're ignoring the FICMAT report. And, and, okay, that's a principle. Then I look particularly at the, at the job descriptions. And of course, I don't, I don't have the original job description, so I can't see how much change there is. But I don't see anything in these job descriptions that would seem to suggest that it's important to change them out of the context of, of a whole examination of the FICMAT report.
Well, it's not just the FICMAT report. Dr. Robertson, can you explain?
Besides the fact that the current job descriptions that we have are 30 years older or more, it was very important that we update it for several reasons. The FICMAT pointed out a number of things that needed to be taken care of and amongst those was job descriptions. So director, executive director, program specialist, job descriptions were written in support of the plan and changes that we wanted to do. Out of that came a request from the school psychologist and the nurses based on two separate grievances, that their job descriptions be updated based on what we were doing with the FICMAT report because they felt they were not functioning under something that was current and really reflected their duties and responsibilities. I've spent six months working with the psychologist and the nurses through a process that involved all of their input, the union's input, going back to the interim special education staff to get their input, and then coming up with a final document to present to you. It's been a collaborative model, but it's 30-plus years old, our job description.
Well, that's very helpful background. I wouldn't have asked my question had it, had that been in writing.
Sure.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Then it's D17, Mr. Heron. This is approval of Peabody Charter Schools adopted budget for the 2019-10 school year.
Yes, my question is the same as it was when we had this before regarding the parcel tax. It indicates that the parcel tax, approximately $80,000, is to be received in January 2010, spending to support current programs. I just...
And we had the same question and went to Peabody. Meg Chite has been in communication with Peabody.
I had a meeting with Nancy Dow, the Director of Fiscal Services, who does their budget and, and all their accounting. And I met with her and we discussed parcel taxes because she was confused about the arrival of them and all of this. And we decided, you know, when I saw that, I said, you know, you can't support your arts and music programs, you have to enhance. So she, this was more of the way she wrote it for her board than really what she meant. She understands that she has to enhance the programs.
I would ask in your, in your motion, that it be subject to the understanding that they augment and not supplant.
And do they have a plan, some of what we have? Do they, are they, under, are they under our citizens oversight committee?
Yes, the, the allotment of the funding is, but the citizens oversight committee has allowed the charter schools to have different plans in the elementary. They do not have to be a part of our district music program, but they do need to have supplemental services in all the areas.
But are they going to be reviewed by the citizens oversight committee specifically?
Yes, they know, all the charter schools got a message from me that clearly states we will be expecting a plan in September when we meet again with the oversight committees.
Thank you. I'll move to approve with the, what did you say, Dr. Sarvis, with the...
Subject to...
With the provision that it, that it supplement and not supplant?
With the provision that it supplement and not supplant regarding the parcel tax.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Cordero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously. D23, approval of right-of-entry permit to allow the City of Santa Barbara to place two light poles on Santa Barbara School District's property at McKinley.
We have a number of issues with, that are unresolved about easements and things dealing with the city. And, and where there are certain claims on us, I'm thinking of Franklin particularly. And I just would like to see their requests and those concerns lumped together because there are real, there's negotiation to happen, to possibilities there that I think that's in the interest of the district to pursue. So I would, I would, I would suggest that, that this be, this be put in that larger context and then an agreement worked out and brought back to the board.
Mrs. Cordero.
Well, this is something they're doing that would benefit us. I mean, not, it's not to their benefit, it's to our benefit that they are willing to do this with their additional light pole, poles. So I'm not sure how we would want to negotiate that with them when they're basically giving us something already.
Mr. Hetjank, do you want to come up and speak to that?
The situation at McKinley is one of those things that you find out again when you start investigating. At McKinley Elementary School, the property line is at the, between the street and the sidewalk. Typically, there's an easement or an ownership fee by the city well beyond the edge of the roadway to include the sidewalk, to include the area where they have all their signs, which unbeknownst to me prior is on our property, not their property, all of their street signs. And we do have some sign pollution, in my opinion, along that area. But the main thing is the city's doing a light, a lighting project on Loma Alta and restoring, not with the same materials, but the same look and amount of light that used to be there as part of their corridor from downtown to the waterfront. And they do have two extra light poles. They would like to put them on our property to light the sidewalk, which, which would enhance probably maybe some people walking to the school for nighttime activities. It would... It would, it's a benefit to the public. And Dr. Noel is right, this would come back after... This is just a right-of-entry for them to place the poles. What it comes back at, as far as the negotiations, whether there's a permanent easement given, has not yet been decided. That's subject to negotiations. But what we have given them is just a right, or what we are proposing to give them is only a right-of-entry to install the poles. They would not have an easement. That part is subject to the negotiations of the total package, as you wish. If we wanted to ask the city to wait on that, we could. However, they have let, they have let or are in process of letting the contract for the rest of the project, and it would be more cost-effective to them to do the work while the contractor's on site. They may not be willing to absorb the excess costs of doing a separate contractor, a contract which would be more expensive because now a contractor has to remobilize, and they have to re-award another contract, and it would be costly. So, and my recommendation is based solely upon the benefit to the McKinley staff, students, and community because it will provide light where it does not exist now along the sidewalk in front of the school. And like I say, this is just, this is only a right-of-entry permit to install the poles. We are not yet giving them an easement. That's subject to negotiations.
Mrs. Deacon?
I think it would be hard for me to imagine turning this down. I mean, we know how slowly the wheels of bureaucracy turn, and as you point out, there might be associated costs with delay. I personally think we should move on this quickly.
Maybe we could sell some land to the city and have them redo the sidewalk instead of us. You never know.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the right-of-entry permit to allow the City of Santa Barbara to place two lights in front of...
I'll second. I'm satisfied with what you said.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think we should have, always be mindful of those other issues.
Show your concern, Dr. Noel.
All right, let's, okay, aye. That carries unanimously. Then D-25 was polled. However, that needs to come back at our next meeting. And so we don't need to have a discussion of it at this point.
May I add a comment to D-24? It was the lack construction.
Yes.
Which is a quote, that "When abstentions do occur under the general parliamentary rule, they are counted as agreeing with the action taken by the majority of those who vote, whether affirmatively or negatively."
Okay, thank you. With that, we come to the end of the consent agenda. Coming events, we had that discussion earlier during the superintendent's report. There was something? Yes, there was a big thing, which is school's starting on Thursday. Board comments and correspondence. Then we'll move on to future agenda items. We have a special meeting being held on this Friday. July, is it 17th at this point? July 17th at 4 o'clock PM. And there will be two items on that agenda. One, we'll discuss the equivalent of item D-25. And also, there will be another item, approval of interim administrators for special education. So, other than the special meeting on Friday, any other agenda items? Yes, Dr. Noel?
Please.
I had two things to ask. We recently got specific data from FICMAT regarding the surveys, and I was hoping that we could request that be made public.
All right.
I've already requested that and gotten approval, so...
Public in the sense that it's...
It's public.
It's public, but do you want to put in a board brief so that people can see it in the binder at the front, just to make it accessible?
Sure, sure.
Just take off the word confidential.
I see, okay.
The other thing I wanted to ask, we also got in the board brief the totals of the prior year legal expenses. And I realize, or prior year, I realize without any context, it's kind of hard to know whether that number is higher, lower, consistent with what we've previously spent. So at some point, I'd like to request that we get some totals of prior years. Thank you.
Mr. Heron?
I have a request on that topic. I'd like to have from FOFROST Friedman and FOFROST, legal services regarding the renewal agreement. I request to have this on the action item for August 25th. I request to include a full report on the 208, 209 legal costs to the firm, settlement costs related to the legal costs, and service provider contract costs related to the settlement costs. I request a review, I presume, in closed session, as to the caseload outstanding and the proposals, prognosis for settlement in each case. I request a summary of what the district staff and site administrators have gained from their legal service and advice in the way of training, advice, and good practice recommendations. I would like to see some collaborative discussions by administration with parents, staff, and SEAC to aid the administration in their recommendation regarding the renewal of this contract.
Could I get that from you in writing? Thank you.
Any other future agenda items?
Yeah, there's another one below it, and it was not done in consultation with Eric Hansi.
Sure.
SEAC envisioned statement. I request an action item to have discussion on recognizing SEAC per the FICMAT report, quote, "As an important group to foster communication and services to children," unquote. We should acknowledge the fact that they desire to be a collaborative participant in developing action plan recommendations. We should consider asking for a board member volunteer to liaison with SEAC. We should consider encouraging their collaboration in forming, quote, "The district-wide advisory group," unquote, recommended in the FICMAT report. And we should consider temporarily adopting their vision statement, which was so eloquently stated by Mr. Hansi.
Any other future agenda items?
Can you pass that one around too?
It's on the same page.
It's on the same page. All right, Dr. Noel.
I have two items. I would like a report and discussion of the disposition, of the amount of and the disposition of stimulus funds earmarked for special ed. And the other thing I would like is a full-blown discussion of the FICMAT report, including... And I'd like that, if possible, to have it set up in such a way that we could act, at least accept the report, because it was a contract, and it was delivered, you know, product from a contract. So that would be like maybe two items, a conference item and an action item. Anyway, and I think we need to have a discussion of the FICMAT report yesterday, but certainly early, as early as possible.
I do want to be clear that obviously we have discussed the FICMAT report, but that we, you're suggesting further discussion of the FICMAT report, perhaps along the lines of timelines and what actions to take next, to that type of thing? Okay, Mr. Heron?
I requested it last meeting, but not exactly correctly because I watched the DVD. But I requested, I thought, that we have an action item to receive and approve the FICMAT report and the opportunity to give some type of guidance as to how we create and communicate and collaborate with the recommendations.
I withdraw my agenda request and endorse Mr. Heron's.
All right. With that, we have come to the end of our agenda, and with no objection from fellow board members, this meeting is adjourned.